I'm going to call the January County Commissioners Meeting to order. And we'll stand at this time, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Langley to do the invocation, and Commissioner Evans to lead in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us through. Heavenly Father, we are grateful and thankful for this moment in time. We are thankful, God, that you have allowed us to move forward into a brand-new year. And now, Father, we pray in the name of Jesus, God, that you will instruct our hearts and guide our minds, God, that we will make wise and prudent decisions concerning your people. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice and all.
At this time, I'll ask if any of the Commissioners have a conflict of interest that they would like to disclose.
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
I hear one no. Assume everybody else is a no. Okay, we're down to the public comments. We have one, Mr. Ray Leary.
Short comments concerning the upcoming budget. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, thank you. The recent 2016 Audit Report reveals that Beaufort County has an unsustainable budget process. There are more funds expended than there are revenues coming into the county coffers from property taxes, fees, and sales tax. The continuation budget development process must be changed if taxes are to be held at the current level. The fund balance cannot continue to be used to balance expenditures and revenues as was done last year. There are a number of ways to approach developing the budget, as I'm sure you're all aware. A zero-based budget is an option where every line item in each department is reviewed and justified by each department manager. Another option is to tell the department managers they have eighty-five percent of some year's previous spending, and have them justify why they require more funding and the benefits to the county for those increased expenditures. A performance-based budget is a viable option. This would provide rewards for department managers that hold their operating costs at current or reduced levels and produce measurable results. The available fund balance, according to the 2016 Audit Report, continues to shrink. Property taxes and fees were increased in 2016. The report reveals expenditures are up and revenue is down. The current trends are unsustainable. Thank you.
We're going to back up and do the approval of the agenda. Any items that need to be removed?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove item number six under Items for Decision.
Item number six is removed. Any other comments? If not, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second it.
Motion is made and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Anybody opposed? Unanimous. Okay, we're down to Items for Consent. Any comments on those items?
It's removed.
If not, do I have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Evans. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Six, one. Okay, we're down for Items for Presentation. B.C. 360, Mr. Lewis, and Bishop McIntyre.
This isn't Bishop McIntyre that's with me. I'm Evan Lewis. I'm an attorney here in Washington. It's good to see so many friendly faces here. This is actually Grandma Lisa Wooler. She had a grandson born between Christmas and New Year's in Greenville, South Carolina. We appreciate you taking the time to listen to us. Do you want me to advance it when I'm ready? Okay. Okay, thank you. And since I already see budgets on your agenda, I think the good news is we're not asking for any money. We just want to tell you about some great stuff that's going on here in the county, just so you're aware of it, and we hope you want to help us and participate with us as we do this work. Beaufort County 360 is the organization we're going to talk about. We have a number of members of the leadership team here. Would you guys like to stand up? B.C. 360, if I call it B.C. 360, it's the same thing. It's just shortened. A quote from Henry Ford, "Just your enlightenment." And this is our collective mission. This is our vision for B.C. 360, to build a user-friendly collaborative network to improve the quality of life for all citizens of Beaufort County. So keep that in mind as we work through this, and you'll see what we've been up to. We started out out of a federally-funded Race to the Top Education Grant called the Transformation Zone. It was funded from 2012 through 2016. Just lapsed, in fact. Funding for that just lapsed. Included four eastern North Carolina counties, including Beaufort, and the initial focus was on childhood education for that. The grant was obtained by a number of county, Beaufort County organizations and agencies. While the initial focus of the group was early childhood education, its mission has broadened now to include finding optimal ways to address a number of issues that adversely affect the quality of life in the county, in our view. The coalition has also grown its membership to include community volunteers, agencies, organizations, and other community entities not part of the initial efforts. The B.C. 360 Coalition Leadership Team is a cross-sector group of individuals that represent key community nonprofit organizations and agencies, Beaufort County Community College, various county agency directors, managers, Beaufort Hospital leaders, faith leaders, private agency professionals, and invested community volunteers. And I think we have examples about all of those folks in the room, which is exciting. This is a word cloud. I don't like these things. They just confuse me by and large. When I looked at this one, which I think we created during our visioning process about where we were going to take the organization, I noticed that the three key words that were highlighted were "community change" and "together," and that's really what we're about. We're about working together and getting others to work with us to change factors in the community that we feel are not optimal for the community. Beaufort County is a great place, but I think we all realize it could still be better. We're an inclusive organization dedicated to diverse parties working effectively towards desired changes. We work with a collective vision model, and our vision is that all our residents should be healthy, all our children should be ready for school, all our residents, individuals, and families are economically secure. So that's the baseline for this, that all of the families here know about and have access to the resources that are already available. And one thing we found is that there are resources here that folks don't access, they don't know about them. So an important part of this is just letting people know what's already out there. We're not trying to reinvent any wheels or duplicate any other efforts. If it's out there already, we just want people to know it's out there and available. Of course, there are some shortages in resources and services in areas, and of course, we'd like to see what we can do to help fill those gaps. Again, a nonprofit 501(c)(3) recognized coalition made up of a cross-sector group of community leaders, volunteers. We have common goals and values. It's a listing of some of the organizations that are involved now. And this is the current leadership team, many of whom are in the room. We've also created at least four substantive and one sort of administrative task force. The Communications Task Force prepared the basis for this presentation today. The other ones deal with issues that we've identified, and we'll talk about in a minute, as key issues that we would like to see addressed in the county. But these are the participants in our task forces in addition to the leadership team. Ed Booth may not know it, but he's on the task force. He's on the childcare task force because it's also the Beaufort Hardwood Partnership What we'd like to do is improve community partnerships and collaborations again, enhance the effectiveness and skills of our service providers here, build community awareness of the importance of school readiness as a foundation for academic success and life success. Promote available resources, services, and supports for residents, improve access, residents' access to available resources, services, and supports, and gain additional support for investment and quality programs to achieve the identified goals. And what are they? Our initial priorities include health. Promote county-wide healthy eating, active-living strategies, and increase access to preventive physical and behavioral health care so that the more expensive types of health care that folks have to go to in crisis, like the emergency room, are less utilized, and folks don't have to go there, and therefore, our health care can be achieved cheaper. Strengthening families. Reducing toxic stress factors that negatively affect families and their children, and promote family protective factors to decrease incidence of child maltreatment and increase parenting education and skills. Literacy. Provide literacy support through a variety of strategies, and promote family literacy because parents who read tend to generate children who read. And reading is absolutely important, even from the standpoint of health. You have to be able to read your prescriptions and the directions in order to use your medicines Childcare. Increase access to affordable, quality childcare, and enhance and support the quality of childcare available to provide high-quality early learning opportunities. These are the outcomes we're looking for. More residents engaged in healthy behaviors, more individual families and children accessing preventive physical, mental, behavioral health services, and more families accessing quality early learning and literacy services. More families providing safe, secure, healthy home environments by using available supports for those families, and more children and adults on positive education and/or vocational paths so they can give back to the community that invests so much in them, and of course, your youth engaged in risky behaviors. In short, we'd like to make our county an even more attractive place for families to live and for businesses to invest in through our efforts. What is next? We have a funder who's willing to carry us for a little while administratively, and we're seeking grants to perform some of the substantive activities we have in mind to fulfill some of the visions we talked about earlier. We do need additional community input and involvement. We're encouraging that. That's one of the reasons we're here. We want to let people know we're here, what we're doing, and invite them to come join Either come to a leadership team meeting, and they are the third Friday of each month at noon at the conference room at the County Health Department, or volunteer for a task force and work with us. If you like literacy, this is a wonderful opportunity to meet other people that care about literacy and want to improve the literacy of Beaufort County citizens. Do you all have any questions for me?
Any questions or comments?
Yes, I have some. When do you anticipate asking the county for funding?
Right now, we have no plans to do so. But if, you know, if an opportunity comes up for the county to invest in one of these programs, and that's the best way to do it, we may indeed come back. But I guarantee you this, sir, anything we ask for is going to be for the benefit of the whole county. It's not going to be to mine anybody's pockets or to do anything other than help families and children. That's what we're about.
But it seems to me like we already have agencies that are funded that are doing what you folks say you want to do.
And that's a good help to us.
Looks like a duplication of effort to me.
They do do that.
You're going to be lobbying? Are you going to be asking anybody for anything that's lobbying?
Not, we haven't addressed that at all. That hasn't come up. I don't think anybody's suggested anything that even looks like lobbying in any of our meetings. We've been meeting, meeting for four years now, basically, from the beginning.
Well, this was funded by a federal grant. You're an extension of a federal grant. You're filling an Obama gap, is what you're really doing. For all of the programs that I've seen up here have all been funded by the federal government in one way or another during the last four years, so really what you're doing is filling the Obama gap.
I don't know if I'd call it the Obama gap, but certainly we have in mind filling gaps in services and resources available to the folks of Beaufort County.
And working together. That's the point, is that with limited resources, the way we stretch that is to work together and find a way to create programs that we're not working in silos so that the Health Department and the partnership and DSS are not working like this, but that we're working like this, that we're putting our money together to make things, to make programs that serve all our community.
I thought making these departments work together was a function of this board and not of an ad hoc group. Isn't that what we did?
So I guess my question is, you don't give me any money, so you can't, are you able to dictate how we spend it?
Nobody said anything about dictating how you spend whatever money you can get.
But I work with them. I work with DSS and the Health Department in various ways as a community partner.
Okay, are you looking for an endorsement from this board?
No, this really is informational. We just wanted to let you know we're out here and what we're doing. That's why we're here. And we also wanted to use the opportunity to, for the platform that you give us and the TV coverage you get to let other people know that we're out there and what we're doing.
Explain to me why we need another layer of government.
We don't, we certainly don't consider ourselves a layer of government.
We're a nonprofit.
But you're binding all of these government agencies together, and all of these department heads and the manager in there, they have no endorsement from Beaufort County to even be involved in this. And you're using government facilities to do this.
Well, I appreciate, I certainly appreciate what you're saying, but again, this isn't something that we're imposing on these folks. My impression is that you've done a wonderful job in hiring agency heads here in Beaufort County.
We have. We have some very good.
They're good people, and they voluntarily are working with us to expand their missions to do a better job at the Health Department by being involved in the community with other agencies, by collaborating, not duplicating, and working together with other people that are doing the same.
They're doing this on their own time, not between eight and five o'clock during the day.
I can't answer that question. Jim is here, sir.
That's because I stood up to speak as a director. The B.C. 360 becomes a tool for us to help. So as a health director, I have this now as a help integrate some of the goals and objectives into other areas by having providers in the group. We work together to tackle diabetes instead of me working on diabetes and them working on diabetes. I can work with children obesity, and schools can work with children, childhood obesity, but together, if we call the program together, then we're able to do our functions in, together instead of in separate silos. So it's funny that it could just be department heads that are dealing with it, but there's so many other partners out there in the county that we really need to involve in order to make it work so that we're not spinning our wheels and that we're giving things away.
Well, I can appreciate what you said, but I thought that this Board of Commissioners had directed these people to all cooperate and work and make this thing work without having to have this particular level. Now, if we don't have cooperation among county departments, then we need to know about it.
I agree, and I think the county Health Department or the county departments are only one-third or so of this. There's also churches that are involved. We have, we have private citizens that are involved. Who else? We have the Partnership for Children involved.
No, they're nonprofits.
We have the Community College involved, the United Way involved. So that these are all people that touch different people, but now we're all working on the same objectives. And the objectives do line up. Like, as far as the Health Department's concerned, substance abuse is an important issue, and so this group works together with Trillium and, you know, on the board as well to help bring that to the county. So it's a tool. At this point, there's no funding needs individually or as a unit of the B.C. 360.
Who's doing your organizing work, sending out your letters, doing the communicating and all of this? Who's providing that service?
There's an executive director that has been funded.
By whom?
I think Viedt and...
Oh, my.
Partnership for Children.
I had some leftover money.
All right, where is the executive director's office going to be?
She's a consultant.
She's an individual contract, or...
Who is this person?
Catherine Keach.
She works at the Community College?
No, she is a private mental health provider.
Oh, so she's going to do this privately from her office, not on government?
Right.
Okay. What do you anticipate your staff will be a year from now?
That's it. Just the executive director to keep everybody working and focusing.
Commissioner Brin.
Chill.
I got one question.
I hadn't quite finished. Are you cutting me off?
I will.
No, the chairman will be the one that's cutting me off.
All right. How many more questions have you got?
Oh, how many am I allowed?
This was an item for presentation that was really not an item for discussion.
No, this is an item for endorsement by this board.
They're not asking.
Whether we, whether you sit here and listen to this or not, you're endorsing this. This is a sleight-of-hand trick, is all that it is.
Commissioner Brin.
You cut me off.
Yes. Commissioner Brin.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
When you run out of grant money, Mr. Lewis, who is going to fund the program?
We fully intend to continue to apply for grants from various sources. Either the administrative expenses from, excuse me, the administrative allowances from large grants or small grants like the two we have now that we're operating under continue to be available. So that's our intent, is to continue to look for funding sources. We had a U.S.C.A. grant in line that unfortunately, when they got down to funding us, our part of it, they ran out of money. So, but we're going to keep looking. We're going to put that one back in, for example.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Mazza.
I just want to say this to you. Thank you, because there are a lot of folks who fall through the cracks regardless of all the different county organizations. There are people who still fall through cracks and don't get the services that they need. So I say hats off to you and continue to do what you're doing. I mean, the most important thing for any county is its people, and that's simply what you're doing. You're looking out for the people of Beaufort County. So continue to do what you do, and don't feel bad about doing good.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mazza.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to echo what Commissioner Langley said. In reading a summary of information here, I think it says it all. Common vision, improve the quality of life for all citizens of Beaufort County, ensure that community resources are aligned. So I also want to echo, thank you, and thank you for everything you're doing for the residents of this county.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for, did you have a question?
Sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. You were very informative.
Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
James, you're up. The Health Department Services expansion business plan.
He can turn that off?
Well, we've got one more presentation.
Okay. Anyway, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, I hope everyone's doing well. Ready to start the new year off in a healthy mode. I know New Year's or start, healthy resolutions all come about on the New Year's. And so I saw that twenty percent of New Year's resolutions actually stay with people for their lifetime. That's really why we encourage those resolutions. I wish it'd be a higher percentage that people would stay on. But, you know, the thing is, as a health director, I continue to ask people to make those resolutions and don't just have to make them on the first of January. It can go on throughout the year at any time. But I'm here to present on the idea of moving public health services into a couple of new arenas. It's important that I note to you that there are two separate conceptions that I'm talking about, but they're tied together in management and staffing and administrative considerations. But before I get into the two concepts, I want to let you know where it is that I came to these ideas. As you know, the Health Department periodically conducts health assessments every three to four years. Last one was done in 2014. The health assessment intent is to gather data and work with community partners to look at the health of the county, the individuals in our county. Then we take this data, feedback, and I work to try to improve the health of the population as a whole. That's what my goal is. Some of the information from that last assessment is that Beaufort County out of one to a hundred ranked sixty-third in healthy outcomes. That means sickness and death, morbidity and mortality. We're sixty-third out of a hundred. We rank eighty-one, eighty-first in health factors. Those include things like poverty and economics issues like unemployment, but it also includes risky behaviors such as smoking, non-activity, not getting out there and exercising, not eating healthy, and things like substance abuse. So those behaviors are very prevalent in our county. Forty percent... 40% of our population has high cholesterol. So four out of 10 people have high cholesterol, which you know, that's one of the leading causes of stroke and heart disease. Every year, we have 130 deaths in our county due to heart disease. 20% of our residents smoke cigarettes or use tobacco of some sort. And as a former smoker, I know how hard it is to quit. And 50% of people have tried, 50% of people that do smoke have tried to quit in the last year, but most of the time they're unsuccessful. Over 12,000 residents in our county are obese or overweight. And that leads to some issues, not just chronic disease issues such as heart disease again and diabetes, but it also has a burden on our knees, you know, knee replacements is a big issue as far as just being out of shape and it affects work. So 11%, that's 5,000 people have diabetes in Beaufort County. And I'm sure that more will develop over time. So this is the issue that I'm looking at as a health director. I wear two hats. One of them is I'm the administrator of the Health Department. The other half hat is to look at this kind of data, get feedback from the community, everybody, and then try to improve the numbers in our population. And not just population, but individual people. For example, when somebody comes in for a vaccination, I'm working with one person at that time. So the future of public health also recognizes a need for us to move toward preventative services. It's so much easier for me, us, to spend money to prevent somebody from having a heart attack than it is to wait for them to have a heart attack. You think about somebody having a heart attack, the costs associated with that, not just in the life that's lost, but if there is any convalescence that comes from it, that's very expensive to the business, wherever they work, and other issues that come about from heart disease. Insurance companies are putting money into prevention services now because they know that it's cheaper. So if, you know, follow the dollar, if insurance companies are doing investments in this, then they must feel like it's going to be effective in the future. Policies now are more, working more towards prevention and things like Medicaid are now endorsing and paying for preventive services. So this is where the environment is that I'm in as a health director here. And I, what I'm doing is trying to position the Health Department to take care of these issues because the Health Department is the backbone of public health of our county. So what are the two areas that I'm looking at? First, the Healthy Living Clinic. The Healthy Living Clinic is designed to have a provider and staff in place to do assessments and counseling and education. So if somebody out there smoked, they want to come into the Health Department, we will see them and try to get them off the tobacco products. Our main focus areas for the Healthy Living Clinic will be in diabetes prevention, weight management, and counseling, tobacco cessation, and employee health, as well as a variety of other preventative services. Like if somebody wants a travel clinic, they can come in and we'll see what country they're going to. We can work them up and get them vaccinated and on medicine, you know, when they're heading out. So that's the one area. The second area would be to administer the jail health program. Now, the jail health administering the jail health program would basically be allowing us to provide required basic health care for the inmates over in our detention center. And this is done with, with the Detention Center Director, Lieutenant Bryan, to bring the services to the jail because we'll be able to work better than the contractor she has right now. We'll be able to provide services at the level that she is looking to do. So that is, you know, I mentioned the, the two hats that I wear. So that's kind of the, the health of the people hat. But when I go back to the health director, the administrator of the department, I do consider the taxpayer dollar in this. And I try to administer the Health Department services as best I can. So I put together a business plan, which I had given everybody a copy of, a copy of this, so that you could see that it's a well-thought-out idea. So I'm not coming from this perspective of a dream, but more or less what I think we need and how we can go about doing it. So here's the thing. I would think that I could do these services without any more cost to the county. No more Beaufort County dollars will be involved. The reason I could do that is because when I look at it, the county already receives money to do the program. But they're turning around, they're contracting with a company in Tennessee to provide this service. So instead of giving it to that company, the budget process would put the money out of the Detention Center Health Program into the Health Department's program. So we would provide that services to the jail. The rest of the money would all come from billing and insurance. So when you come in for the visit, if you have insurance, you just bill it, that service will provide for it. So that's really the plan in a nutshell. I tried to keep it simple and, but open it up for discussion. The business plan details all of the services I'm trying to look at. They're available for you to look at a little bit more in depth. And the reason I'm putting the information to you now is because I need to get your support prior to the budget time, at least in agreement with the concept, because I need to say, I need to know. And I've worked with the county manager on this process to let you know what I want to do so that you can agree, vote to support this. And that way I'll know what I can do when the time comes. And I can't just wait till June to start this process. I need to write protocols, I need to get job descriptions approved by the state, I need to prepare other documents, you know, knowing that this is supported. And then the jail needs time to work with the contractor to get out of the contract so we can start the process in the next fiscal year. So I wasn't really asking for a vote today. It was more of a process to get it out to the constituents, they can talk to you all about it. Y'all can ask the Health Department about anything, talk to the county manager, whatever you might need to do to, to review this. And then maybe at the next meeting, put it up for a vote to support it. Again, it's mostly concern, not that y'all don't have any concerns with taking the hundred, the money out of the jail now and putting it over into the Health Department. That's the big one right there. So any questions?
Have you, have you updated the presentation that you shared earlier?
That's pretty much the same thing, yeah.
Would you, would you make sure that you send, get Katie a copy so she can email it to each one of us? Because I don't, I don't think anybody, if you got a copy?
How many people have seen your presentation? I have, but...
All the county commissioners are the only ones that have seen it.
All the county commissioners?
So they would have time to discuss it tonight if they had to, yeah.
Well, I have some discussion. Okay, how many staff are you proposing to add?
Three, three staff members and a part-time provider.
A part-time provider? That's a doctor?
Or a, or a nurse practitioner or a PAs.
But they're going to have to work under the supervision of a doctor?
They will.
So there's a doctor in there somewhere?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then you're proposing to add three, two nurses?
I'm still kind of in fluctuation about the exact makeup. It looks like maybe one RN and two LPNs would be the best fit.
So we're going to be increasing the staff by four more people?
Yes, sir. At no extra cost to the county, though.
Well, I'm, I'm not so sure that I agree with that.
Same from my perspective.
The, the, for one thing, you're going to be taking about $150,000 that is now from the jail for the services that are currently being provided under contract. I have a problem with that from this standpoint. You've already said that you're going to improve the health of the people in the jail. All right? You can't, my understanding is you can't collect Medicaid for that.
That's correct.
Okay. So where, where is this, where is the money going to come from that's going to improve the health of these people?
It's the $150,000 that would go from the jail's budget to our budget.
Well, there, there's another problem that's not really apparent in doing that. The people that provide the medical service to the jail right now are triage or screener type people. They make sure that only the services that are needed to be provided to these people are provided. And what the Health Director is proposing to do is take them to raise. There's a big difference between those two concepts. And, and I don't think you're going to do it for the same amount of money. There's also a huge liability issue here because right now, we have a, a wall or a protection between us and the people that are in the jail. For instance, if they were to decide to sue the county for whatever reason having to do with medical care, we have a company that's going to be there to defend themselves and us too. If the county takes this over, then we have no protection for the taxpayers for medical lawsuits that come out of the jail. All of that is going to change. So there's a tremendous risk to the county in saying that you're going into a jail and you're going to make everybody in the jail healthy. It's not exactly what it looks like it is. The other thing that has happened with the people that are providing this, the reason that we went to these contractors was that we had no one screening, no one giving what you might call the first level of care to these people in the jail. And consequently, every time somebody's got a toe ache, the deputy had to come off of his job, haul them over to the hospital, to the emergency room, and sit there with them for whatever time it took. And it was quite expensive. We saved money and reduced our, the county's liability when we did this. And I don't support changing it because when the Health Department starts doing it, you know, they're already going in there with the idea that they're going to make all of these people healthy. And that means you're not going to have a, an objective, fair-minded treatment of people that are in jail. We're, now we're providing full health care at a higher level than we were providing before. Right now, all that we're required to do is to make sure they get whatever treatment that they have to have. We're stepping this up now that we're giving free medical care. So you need to understand what you're getting into with this. You also need to understand, by the way, I'm on the Board of Health and I voted against this when it came up at the Board of Health. The, just so you'll know, the, all of the services that the Health Department is proposing to provide are provided medically in the community already. So you'll have, we are now going out to compete with the rest of the medical fraternity for the money in order to do this. And, and what this is based on is that we can collect enough, from Medicare or Medicaid mostly, Medicare, Medicaid, private insurance companies or whoever, that we can collect enough money from them to make this thing break even and at least break even. And, you know, I'm not sure that you can always do that because one thing that we don't know right now is what is going to happen to medical payments during the next two years. We simply don't know that because we have a new president that's sworn that he's going to change the system that we've got. I have a feeling that there's, medical payments are going to go down because right now they're exorbitantly high. I'm opposed to doing this. It's a bad idea. You're increasing the county staff and all of that overhead, and you're not sure, sitting in this room, what they're going to be doing, other than we have people who want to provide them with good medical care. And good medical care is already being provided in the community. Another thing you should be suspicious of is how is this, how, how does this work with the rest of the medical care that's going on here? So it's a bad idea. It's making government bigger. I am not going to vote to make government bigger. The Health Department has already reached out under the prior director and providing medical services. I don't mind if you want to go to the Health Department and you want to get a sheet that says I'm going to Southern Sudan. Here's what you need to be aware of if you're going there, and here's the shots you need. Take that to your doctor and let him do that for you. Why should we as a taxpayer be providing that kind of a service, even if it's a break-even service? That's providing medical care. Health Departments are moving more and more into becoming medical providers. Believe me, public, when they become medical providers, you are going to pay, and you are already paying enough as it is. It's a risk and a liability that the taxpayers don't need to take.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I just wanted to, if I may, address it. And I think you always bring up valid points. But liability, we, we have liability insurance already, so that's going to be involved in that already. So if a medical lawsuit comes up, we are covered through that liability insurance. If the county was named in a lawsuit, they're going to be named in the lawsuit whether it's due to the contractor doing it or us doing it. So liability, I think, would be a wash as far as that issue goes. The services that was brought to me, isn't it so much making a better health care for the person? Because everybody should be providing quality health care if they're, that's their job. But right now, the contracts don't allow for nighttime medication, evening medication. So at seven o'clock in the evening, when you have, you have the Sheriff's Department or Detention Center folks giving out medicine to the, to the inmates, that becomes a liability in itself because you don't even have a professional doing that. I think, we feel like we will be able to treat them more so to keep them from using the emergency room so that you don't do all those kind of things. That's, that's the intent of all this, is to try to make it not so much always better for the inmates, but to make it a better program as a whole. And then the inmates leave and they become the citizens of the population again. And if they're using drugs, and we can intervene and keep them from coming back to drugs when they get out, that's a good thing for the whole health of the public. So the intention is not just to bring better health care, but to bring better health to the people, even the inmates. And as far as competition, these aren't being done in the county at the level that needs to be done. If you want to go quit smoking, you go talk to your provider, he may give you a prescription for Zyban and nicotine patches, but you don't get a half hour to an hour session with somebody that's going to go over this program or enter you into a tobacco cessation program that is structured to help you with the success of that effort. So that's what it's about. So, but good points, but I, I'm just, I've thought of them and I try to minimize those kind of things.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me ask you a question. The clinic where you provide injections to residents from the county, I would assume a number of those residents are, can't afford or have no other access to some of these preventative injections?
Right. We do have a sliding scale based off of your income.
And what type of injections do you give?
Your standard vaccine, preventable diseases like measles, mons, rubella, pertussis, tetanus, rabies.
So in effect, what you're doing is saving the county or healthcare cost by providing the service that you're providing. And, and I understand it's on a sliding scale.
Right.
All right. I, I look forward to having more detailed discussions on your plan. I think it, it interests me and intrigues me, what you're trying to do. So I would look forward to further discussions.
All right. James Ives, that you put it on the agenda for February for action, and we'll take a vote so that, that'll allow you time to do whatever you need to do.
All right. Mr. Chairman, and could I ask you to contact me? We'll set up a meeting. I'd like to come over and have further discussions.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. All right. Okay, we're down to item number three, summary presentation of the 2016 audit. Anita?
Good evening, Commissioners, and Happy New Year. I'm here this evening to present a summary of the last year's audited financials. This PowerPoint was sent out to all you Commissioners right before Christmas. I trust that you've had enough time to review it so we can hopefully move through it rather quickly this evening. If you'd like to follow along, it's on page 170 in your agenda book. The audit has been approved by the LGC. I received word last week on December the 29th that they have accepted and approved I received word last week on December the 29th that they have accepted and approved the audit report. The county did receive an unmodified audit opinion, and this is a very good thing. This is the opinion that we want. It's the highest audit opinion that can be given by the auditor. It means that the financial statements fairly represent the financial condition of Beaufort This third point here, I hope this will be the last time that I have to talk about this, but I want to remind you that in the prior year, 1415 audit, when I took over here at the county, there were 13 audit findings. I'm happy to report that all 13 of those findings have been corrected. And if you move to the next page, here's a screenshot here out of our current audit report. I don't know if everyone can see it, but you can see the status under each one of these shows as corrected. We did have three audit findings for the 1516 audit. Two of those were actually related to continuing to correct and clean up prior year items that were improperly accounted for. One of those was related to recording accounts payable, and I'll get into a little more detail about that. I am happy to report that all three of those items have already been corrected. And of course, as I mentioned to you last month, my goal for our department is to have no audit findings in the future. And I think we're headed in that direction. I know this is really difficult to see, but I just wanted to give a brief explanation about the three audit findings that we did have for last year. I mentioned that two of the three findings were correcting prior year information that was, was found over the period of time when the auditors were here last year. The good thing about it is we actually found some unrecorded revenue that had not previously been recognized. So, we ended up increasing our fund balance as a result of those prior period adjustments. Now, the bad news is, is that we got dinged for it because it wasn't recorded in the year that it actually happened and we had to do a subsequent adjustment for it. That third finding is for items related to accounts payable. And when you're going to a modified accrual basis of accounting at year end, what you have to do is you have to recognize your revenue when it is earned and your expenses when they are incurred. So, if you think about getting to the very end of the year and we're starting a new year, come July and August, we're getting in invoices for items that happened or services that were rendered in the previous year, usually in May and June. And what happened was, is those handful of invoices, there were four of them, actually got recorded in this fiscal year that we're in right now, 1617, instead of being posted back in prior year. So, those were corrected. They were caught by the auditors. They were reversed out of the current year and posted back in the prior year. And there has been staff training and education within the finance department to ensure that that doesn't happen in the future. Now, we'll delve into the numbers just a bit. This slide right here shows the general fund revenues and expenditures in total before transfers and debt issued. And as you can see, revenue has remained very constant between 2015 and 2016. Both years, it was right at $56.6 million. That's the two blue bars. You can see they're almost dead even right there. However, for the expenditure side, there was an increase in 2015. Our spending was at $53.9 million and it increased in fiscal year 1516 to $58.1 million. The main things that contributed to this increase is an increased spending in public safety of $1.9 million. And most of that, 1.5 million of that 1.9 million, was implementing the countywide EMS And we'll delve into that a little deeper as we go through. We're going to keep drilling down into these numbers as we move along in the, in the presentation. Available fund balance, this chart shows available fund balance at June 30th for the past five years. You can see available fund balance at June 30th, 2016. It's the last bar all the way to the right, was right at $18.2 million or 31.3 percent of general fund expenditures. The county did spend $2 million in fund balance during last year. However, you'll remember, I mentioned a few minutes ago that we found some unrecorded revenue. That amounted up to $400,000. So, net-net, we dropped 1.6 million. We spent two. We picked up $400,000. So, the net decrease in fund balance was 1.6 million. And we purchased several very large ticket items with that fund balance last year. If you'll recall, we purchased the First Bank Building. We purchased land at Beaufort Community College, the Wright's Creek property, and we also did the Courthouse Security Project. The next slide takes these numbers and puts it into a percentage so you can see over the last five years what the available fund balance has been as a percentage of the general fund expenditures. And I also added that green line across the top. That's the 35% target that we have kind of set for ourselves for our fund balance amount to be. And you can see for two years there, in 2014 and 15, we actually exceeded that mark slightly. And then it did fall back last year when we spent that $1.6 million. It fell back to the 31.3 percent. I thought it would be prudent to take a little glance at what we've spent thus far, or not spent, but what we have appropriated thus far for fund balance in the current year we're in. And that amount, I'm not sure that you can see it here, but it's just a little over $3 Top three revenues for the county, and this is very similar throughout all counties, ad valorem taxes make up about 55%. Restricted intergovernmental revenues, these are your revenues from the state of North Carolina and the federal government to support DSS and the Health Department. That's about 22% of our revenues. And sales tax makes up about 14% of our revenues. So, all in all, out of the, all the revenues that the county receives, these three categories make up 92% of the county's revenue. We take a two-year look at what's happened with our ad valorem tax collections. You can see that they did fall off in 2016 compared to 2015. There was about a $690,000 drop. This drop is due to a drop in business personal property values of the county's largest taxpayer. Sales tax, same thing. We had about a 5% drop or $400,000 in 2016 compared to 2015. Restricted intergovernmental revenues, again, these are the funds that we receive from the state and federal government. These actually increased by about $400,000 compared to 2015. Now, if we take a look at the expenditure side, our three biggest areas of spending are education at 31.5%, human services at about 21%, and public safety at 17.2%. We're total spending of about $44.5 million for these three categories or 70% of the Education expenses did increase by $700,000 in 2016 compared to 2015. Of that $700,000, an additional $500,000 went to the public school for operating and capital needs. And $200,000 of that, as I mentioned earlier, went to the community college for the purchase Human services expenditures increased by about $550,000 in 2016 when compared to 2015. I think the important thing to remember here is most of these services are mandated services and fortunately, about 75% of these costs are reimbursed back to us by federal and state grant monies. And that correlates back up here with this $400,000 increase you saw on the revenue side in the restricted intergovernmental revenues. As I mentioned earlier, public safety expenditures increased by $1.9 million in 2016 compared to 2015. The majority of this increase, or about $1.5 million of that 1.9 million, is due to the startup cost of the countywide EMS service. The thing that this slide does not show, because this is just an expenditure slide, we're comparing 2016 expenditures to 2015, this doesn't show the revenue piece for EMS. So, we anticipate that about two-thirds of that EMS cost, of that $1.5 million, will be recouped back to the county through the EMS district revenues from Bath, excuse me, Bath Township, Pantigga Township, the Town of Bellhaven, and then also the third-party Then we have a little group of funds called other governmental funds. There are capital project and special revenue funds. This is where your E-911 state funds, state federal drug seizure funds, FEMA projects, and CDBG grant projects. That's where they're all accounted for and they've been aggregated here together. And you can see their total revenues for 2016, their total expenditure. Other financing sources is usually a local contribution or a transfer from the local government. That gives us a net change in fund balance of $194,000 and an ending fund balance for all of these special revenue funds of $823,000. Property tax collections, for the last five fiscal years, you can see here that it was pretty consistent in 2012 and 2013. And then we had this nice bump in 2014. But if you'll remember, that is the year when the state took over the DMV billing and collections of the motor vehicle tax. So, in that 2014 year, you had a couple of things happen. First of all, our collection rate for our motor vehicle taxes went from probably about 80% to 99%. We had a much better collection rate. And then the second thing that happened was, is we had a four-month windfall of collections in that fiscal year because when they switched over, instead of having 12 months of collections, we had 16 months of collections. So, it's reasonable to anticipate that in the next fiscal year, 1415, that would go down slightly because we don't have that four months worth of windfall in there. And that equated to about $600,000. And then, of course, we already talked about, you know, why it fell off in 2016. And that's due again to the county's largest taxpayer having a large decrease in their business personal property taxes. We'll take a quick glance at the water districts. This shows the revenue, operating expenditures, and debt payments by district. And you can see that they're all operating at a healthy profit. And the reason that we have programmed it in that way is because, if you'll remember, we have some very large debt payments that are coming up. The way those limited obligation bonds were, the way they were structured, was that you have really low debt payments so that you could be building up these reserves and these profits. So, come, I believe it's next year, it might be the following year, that they really increase by a great amount. We do have a couple of questions that were submitted by Commissioners. And Commissioner Richardson asked, has been presented this evening in open session. So, here they are. Commissioner Richardson asks, "Why the decrease of $689,000 in ad valorem taxes? Is this a one-time event or will it continue and why?" Well, I think we've been through this. You can see the tax collections for the largest taxpayer in the county for the past six years. And we already stated that in 2016, they had a large drop in their business personal property taxes of $907,000. Now, the good news is they just paid their bill before Christmas and it's back up. You'll see that far right column, it is back up over the $6 million mark. So, that's good news. Commissioner Richardson asks, "Why the $422,000 decrease in sales tax? Is this a one-time event or will it continue and why?" I went back and looked at the sales tax distributions from the state for the last five years. And unfortunately, Commissioner Richardson, I don't really have a good explanation for you about why that went down. You know, looking at the charts here, what's interesting to me is really the 1415 huge bump that we had from 1314. It went up, you can see in 2014, it was 7.3 million. Then it went all the way up to 8.4 million, a million-dollar increase. And you, as you know, you know, they say sales tax is, is very much tied to consumer spending, which is tied to consumer confidence. So, I think the good news is that there's been some recent law changes in sales tax that the county should benefit from. This past March, the state enacted sales tax on labor. So, I anticipate, if anything, this, this number will hold constant or hopefully we'll see some growth in our sales tax numbers. Of course, this is all tied to, again, consumer confidence and the economy. So, a lot rides on that. Commissioner Richardson asks, "Where did the $727,000 increase in education expenses go? Public schools, community college, or other?" So, I made a little schedule here and you can see that for operating, the public schools got an additional $564,000. It's the number on the right-hand side. We actually decreased the capital that we gave them by $161,000. So, the net increase that we gave the public school in '16 over '15 was $403,000. For the community college, they got an additional $102,000 for operating expenses and an additional $222,000 for capital, making their total increased contribution $324,000. and an additional $222,000 for capital, making their total increased contribution $324,000. Commissioner Richardson asks, "The $554,000 increase in human services, what caused the increase?" Most of that increase was in the Department of Social Services. It did increase by almost $417,000 of the $554,000. And that increase is due to the addition of five positions in that department, and the 2% COLA. The other large increase in DSS was in the foster care expenses. That totaled $132,000. These additional expenses were offset by additional federal and state revenues. The average revenue for administration is approximately 50 percent, and the average revenue offset for foster care is approximately 60 percent of those numbers. And the last question, Commissioner Richardson asks, "1.873 million increase in public safety, what departments increased, and how much?" Actually, the increase was 1.972 million, not 1.873 million. And the below schedule here shows what departments, if you look at the 1, 2, the difference column, it will show the departments that increased are the positive numbers, and then we also had a couple of departments that decreased there in the parentheses there. So, you can see the departments that went up. The Sheriff's Department went up 200, almost 69,000. The jail went up almost 151,000. Communications went up 209. And the other big one, of course, that we've already talked about is EMS went up almost 1.5 million. Are there any other questions?
Anita, go back to the sales tax screen.
Right here?
Yes. I'm not sure, but at the point of sale, when a new car or new truck is purchased, the sales tax, I'm assuming we get a percentage of that, but it goes to Raleigh, and then it comes back to the county?
Yes.
So, I would assume the same thing happened there, because it just sped up the process. Since it was electronic, we probably got to start getting the money an extra 90 days or 120 days earlier.
You're talking about when DMV took over the collection process?
Yes.
Could very well be.
That we could have had the same kind of phenomenon.
Spike.
And once it got in the system, it just levels that.
Well, also, one of the things I think that we talked a little bit about was the consumer confidence in '15 started in other places in the country, started to grow. Things were happening in the Triangle, things were booming. And kind of the thing that I've talked somewhere up here is about is, as that confidence level started to build, people started to feel that. So, they started spending a little more money in areas in the east and areas in the west, where they were seeing those increases around the larger metropolitan areas. And then the next year, it didn't continue, because what folks realized was, that confidence that was going on and the growth that was going wasn't extending over into the rural areas. And folks kind of drew back a little bit and said, "Wait a minute. Maybe it's not doing as good as I thought it was." So, I think Anita's point about consumer confidence plays a lot into that. Sales tax, based on consumer confidence, is a big, big issue. So, and again, for us, because we have no control over the General Assembly's tax policy as it relates to sales tax, it takes history for us to understand what changes to the sales tax formula does for us. They don't give us the detailed information that they're making their determinations off of. What we have to, anytime they tweak something, it takes us a couple of years to understand what the impact is for us. So, we take a shot at it, and we see historically what's happened, and hopefully, we're close, and, you know, we go on. But for us, it's about history. That's the only way we can really understand sales tax. And when they screw around with it, it resets our baseline, and we have to start again.
The other things that's happened with sales tax, I don't know that it's happened recently, but in the past, depending on how much money the state treasurer thought he had, or thought he needed, or what his collections were, they have, you know, you'd get sales tax as much as 180 days late. So, they do play games with it, and you do have to be careful when you're looking at it.
Yeah, actually, our sales tax runs three months behind in a minimum.
Yeah.
Katie? Thank you.
Thank you. Greenland is applying for a community service block grant. According to Carolina Administrative Code, it requires that each of their grants should be submitted to you guys for any input or questions that you may have. Doesn't require a vote from y'all, just me to review it, and for me to be able to return that form saying you received a copy, and any questions or comments that you might have about that grant. If at all possible, if you do have any comments or questions, submit those to you guys on January 10th, so I can include it with the packet back to Greenland.
Anybody have any questions?
Well, what is the grant? I mean, what are they gonna do with this money when they get it?
It's for their anti-poverty plan. And I'll be honest, I'm not overly worried. I'm sure that we got, Mr. Bozzi, are you involved?
Yeah, it's a very worthwhile organization. They use a lot of the funding, as you said, for poverty causes. It's strictly grant money from the government. To me, it's a worthwhile organization, and a worthwhile function that they perform.
Other comments? You still have until January the 10th?
Yes, sir.
All right. Items for discussion. Number one, Bellhaven Hospital Inspection Letter, Mayor Adam O'Neill.
Hope everybody's doing well. Happy New Year to everyone. Everybody knows the situation in Bellhaven with the hospital. We've had a pretty graphic, brutal death in our community. If you drive out of hospital property, you can see it. It's a horrible-looking situation, about 10-foot-high debris, and that is the future of our community. I would say that most, probably 80 percent of the homeowners in Bellhaven are over 60 years old. We don't know who's gonna replace them when they pass on. One of the problems we've had is judge shopping and all, a lot of fraud going on. And the judge shopping took care of covering up fraud. But we had one situation that had to do with the county. When I became mayor in 2005, previous to that, we had a building department, a building inspector that was being used for politics. And it's a horrible thing when a building inspector is used for politics to go after people, or to omit things, or to write wrong reports. So, I've had firsthand experience with that, and we had to make changes in Bellhaven due to that going on, and I'm afraid that the county may have it going on as well. So, it's up for discussion, of course, but I want to tell you what my experience was, and then Commissioner Richardson can tell you what his experience was. The first thing is, everybody knows the hospital is a very volatile issue. The hospital's extremely important to Bellhaven. The economic impact of the hospital closing is $17 million a year. There's no way for Bellhaven to make that up. So, the town council passed unanimous resolutions supporting the hospital, and supporting the offers made on the hospital, but all of the offers were turned down. But during the time all this was going on, the Bellhaven Town Manager, Woody Jarvis, talked to Seth Loughlin about the situation at the hospital, and requested, being that the hospital's in our city limits, that if any permits were applied for, or granted, or any inspections, that the town be notified. Mr. Loughlin said that he would make sure that took place. Well, we had a situation where Inspector Brandon Hayes came out, December 3rd, maybe, I can't remember the exact date, December 2nd, and did an inspection on the hospital property for demolition. Well, the town was not given any notice of that. When I learned of the inspection was when I got a letter from our lawyer asking me if I knew anything about this. So, Mr. Hayes did an inspection, did a letter, didn't send the town a copy, didn't send both parties of the lawsuit a copy. He gave Mr. Brantley Tillman a copy, who asked for the report, who was trying to work towards tearing the hospital down. Mr. Hayes worked with Brantley Tillman to get this letter. So, when I saw the letter, I started reading it, and immediately, you could see that it was a false letter. I talked with Mr. Hayes, I called him up, as I always do. If I have a problem, I'll call you and talk to you about it. Well, I took the letter, and I said, "It says in this letter that floors are decaying and unsafe." I said, "Brandon, you're making it look like all the floors in the hospital are about to fall in." He said, "Well, they are." I said, "No, they're not. 60% of the hospital is not even 20 years old. A lot of us on slab." He said, "Well, where I went it was?" I said, "Okay." "We must not have walked the whole hospital." "Oh, yes, I did. Then you saw all the floors weren't caved in." Then he kind of backtracked. "Well, not all of them." I then went to the next thing, which was, he said some were caved in. There was a couple of areas in the old part of the hospital where they caved in, I think, due to some help. So, some political people could take a picture and try to make a big deal out of it. Because the condition of this hospital was misrepresented to the public continuously. Things as far-fetched as it flooded. It never flooded. 60% of it wasn't even 20 years old. We also had a situation where he was talking about structures, like the floor structure. My understanding is, Mr. Hayes is not a structural engineer, and wasn't even qualified to give an opinion on that. We also had the comment in the letter that the roof was structurally unsound. Once again, something that Mr. Hayes cannot say, because he's not a structural engineer. So, Mr. Hayes was sent down to do a letter, like somebody told him to do. So, he challenged me that his letter was accurate. I told him it was not accurate, and went on to talk about the walls. He said the walls were all saturated. That's impossible. The whole roof everywhere would have to leak for all the walls to be saturated. The walls were only saturated where there were leaks, that were never taken care of. So, we had a fully functioning hospital a couple of years ago, where there were patients. It was in that good a shape. And then were to believe the whole place is caving in in a two-year period, when all the doors have been closed. That's not true. So, the status, the condition of this hospital was lied about the entire time. And Mr. Hayes, I think, was brought into this unknowingly to be used as a pawn. The judge in the lawsuit, who was judge shopped, who was obviously biased, obviously biased, and will be pointed out in the future in media, what he did. He said things that were graphically wrong, and had to be intentionally said to be wrong, because he had the information that showed opposite. But we have a situation where the judge was using Brandon's letter over and over again in court, as if all the floors were caving in. All the walls were wet. All the roof structure was about to cave in, which was all not true. So, we had a situation where this report was important. Now, I called Commissioner Richardson about it, because he's been vital in helping with the hospital, the only county commissioner that has been helping with the hospital, trying to save that death that we've experienced on Water Street in Bellhaven. And I asked him about Brandon and about this situation. He said, "Well, Brandon's a good guy, I'll call him." And he also said that he had asked the building inspectors to let him know if any inspections or any permits were going to be granted. As a public official and a representative of Bellhaven taxpayers, he has a responsibility to know what's going on. Mr. Hayes nor anybody else in the inspection department gave him a notice either. Now, why was that? So, then, in my conversation with Mr. Hutchinson, after I hung up, he called me back a couple hours later, and he said, "I've talked to Brandon. I think he's gonna rewrite the letter." All right? Hood is an engineer, knows a little bit about a structural engineer, knows a little bit about building. So, he talked to him and pointed out that his letter was false. Here's where the big problem comes in. Brandon told Hood that he was gonna rewrite his letter. So, Brandon, on his own, with his license on the line, told Hood he was gonna rewrite the letter. He then checked with his higher-ups, maybe the county manager, and, I don't know, county attorney probably sitting over there, and was told not to redo the letter. So, the inspector, who has taken the classes, whose license is on the line, wanted to rewrite the letter, and the county manager and the county attorney, my understanding is, didn't want him to rewrite the letter. Also, some commissioners had to be aware of what was going on. I'm certain that the county attorney called someone, some county commissioner, and said, "What do we do? Because it's a one-to-six thing against the hospital." So, anyway, we have a situation. The reason I came out tonight away from my family again, to spend my time here, is because I know how difficult it is to live in a town, much less a county, where the inspections department can be used for political purposes. And that's not what we need in Beaufort County. And that letter contributed in some small way to that hospital being a pile of rubble. And now, Mr. Hayes has a Bellhaven citizens file to complain on him. And the complaint is because Brandon's superiors put him in the position of having a complaint file. So, anyway, I'll take any questions, or I'll move on and let Mr. Richardson speak.
You want to go ahead and make your comments, and then we'll come back.
Yeah, well, my comments are this. It's always bad when employees are used for political purposes, and that's what's going on here, because the request was made. If I, as a county commissioner, cannot ask a county employee for information, I didn't say, "Don't issue the permit. Don't do this, don't do that." I said, "I understand what your responsibility is. Call me and let me know when you do have to issue it. Call me and let me know when this happens." I never received a call from the inspections department about anything. I found out about it second and third hand, and when, first, they told me, "We don't have anything to do with demolishing the hospital. You can demolish a building, you don't need a permit from us." And I was told this for about four months through the whole summer. And then, all of a sudden, I found out that the department has issued something to demolish the hospital. I went over, and I said, "Why did you issue something to demolish the hospital?" "Well, we discovered that if you do asbestos studies, and lead studies, and some of these other things, that we have to be involved to ensure that the directions of the consultant are followed." I didn't say, "Why didn't you call me?" I just marked it up and went on my way. And lo and behold, here's what really happened on this thing. Here's why this is so important. We had an injunction to stop the demolition of the hospital, a temporary injunction that was in force. So, what does Tillman do? He goes, and he gets the county, now, the county, keep in mind, the county has already issued the demolition permission. They had no business being back on the property at all, under any circumstances whatsoever, period. Because it was in demolition, it was fenced off, it was dangerous, don't be there. But when we got the temporary injunction, Tillman then goes to the county, and the county politicians did him a favor. That includes the staff, along with the rest of you guys. They wrote a letter that the judge would not allow any additional information submitted before the hearing challenging Brandon's letter. He would not hear it, it didn't get there. But during the two-hour hearing, I was there, so I'm talking to Moses.
Not in this lifetime with a neck on the car.
Well, in this case, you are. And the judge repeatedly referred to the letter, item by item, and said, "Well, if you can't walk on the floors, the building needs to be demolished. It looks to me like the building inspector is demolishing the building. The floors have caved in. The roof is structurally unsound. The structure on that roof is less than 20 years old. And I haven't looked at it, but it's probably steel. So, give me a break. 60% of the building was built that way. The walls are saturated." That can't possibly be true for what the manager just said. He referred to this over and over again. And lastly, here's the really big misinformation lie of the whole thing. I want to commend you for the county for having the foresight to protect the properties around this hospital. Now, how many of you have been to Bellhaven Hospital? It's got water, and it was fire, is what he was talking about, the fire. There's water on two sides of it. It's 150 feet to... It's 150 feet to another structure on the other side, and you have to go across the street to get to a building. So what has happened, I don't know how it's happened internally, because I have deliberately, after a short conversation I had with the manager, I stayed away from this because it has a real putrid smell to it. Real putrid. I don't know who was involved in this, but they put this young man in the position of lying about the condition of that building and of making it appear to the judge that he had condemned the building. The building inspector cannot condemn a building. The building inspector can start condemnation proceedings. After that, there's a process and a procedure of notices, and the owner in every building has the right to go in and say, "I'll do this and do this and do that, and you get off my back." That's how it works when condemning a building. If a building is already being demolished and you have a temporary restraining order to demolish it, the building inspector, the county has injected itself into this process in a very corrupt way. We don't have a procedure other than the general statutes that goes to the demolition of a building. We follow the general statutes. We don't have our own ordinances having to do with this. And when you read the general statute, it says the things that I just said. There is a process. Nobody can go out and condemn your building and have it torn down. But Beaufort County has exceeded itself in this case. If you had had to sit there and listen to that judge refusing any additional testimony, which makes you very suspicious, quoting this and drawing conclusions from this, and Beaufort County has gone in and helped their buddy. That's what happened. You don't have a hospital in Bell Haven today primarily because of Beaufort County. Because that case would have been totally different if the judge had not had this letter signed by a Beaufort County building inspector. Now, I have, I have a problem with this. There are some other problems that involve procedural matters that go with this. For one thing, the paperwork that was submitted and signed, $100 in cash was paid. It doesn't say who paid the cash. Nobody signed the paperwork as a receipt of cash. The $100 that was paid, there's nothing on that piece of paper that says what it was for. Procedure after procedure, it makes you wonder how close this would come to failing an audit if it were, if it were looked at by anybody that was serious. No names of individuals, the names of the owners, on and on. No description of the work to be done. Now, one thing you need to know about building permits. The county issues building permits, why? Because you're building something. Counties don't issue destruction permits. So this is a serious matter, and I would request that at the next meeting, the manager be able to give us a full report of the people who were involved in doing this. Who made the request? Who did the favors for good money? And who did not understand his job? Because they certainly, the staff certainly didn't know what they were doing, or they would never have gone on the property to begin with. Very easy. "Hey, guys, you are in demolishing the building. So what do we need to go back down there for to tell you to demolish it again?" It's corruption, pure and simple.
Well, I'd like to take back my comment. Jerry, you weren't here at the time. I'm not including you in that. Jerry is not trying to hurt the hospital in any way that I'm aware of.
At this time, we're going to give our county manager the opportunity to walk us through this transaction. So Brian, I'll let you at the floor.
I'd be glad to tell you the steps in which, it's my understanding the way things went through. The chief end inspector and the planning director came to my office one morning and said, "We've gotten a request to do an inspection of a building. There's a concern that there's some issues with the building due to safety." I asked the question, "What would you normally do in that situation?" They said, "We would normally inspect the building and issue a letter to the owner regarding what the issues are with the building." Typically, it is unusual for the county to receive a request from an owner to come inspect their own building.
That's your first clue.
However, however, it doesn't matter in our eyes because if it is a, typically, it's a tenant that comes to us and says, "My landlord won't do something. It's, it doesn't come to code. It doesn't do those things." And our inspectors go and look at it. It's part of what they do for their job. Or we may get a complaint from an adjoining property owner that says, "There's an issue with this, and you need to look at it from a safety and standpoint." And that's what our inspectors do. So what I said to them was, "How would you normally handle this? Would you, what would you normally do?" And they said, "We would normally look at it." I said, "Well, then you need to do what you would normally do in the situation." So they went down, they looked at it, they issued a letter, which is what they typically do for anyone, to say, "These are the issues that we found." Now, you have to remember that the building inspector is the only one who can do that. And it's based upon his certification and his understanding of what the structure looks like and what his job is. He issued a letter to the owner that said, "These are the deficiencies that are related to this structure, and they need to be corrected. And if they're not corrected, then under the statute, I have an obligation to condemn the building." Now condemning a building...
Whoa, 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 whoa. The words condemn are not in that statute. He doesn't condemn the building. He issues an order for corrections to be made. I've got a copy of the general statute right here.
Commissioner Hood.
General Statute 153A-366, unsafe buildings condemned. The inspector shall condemn an unsafe, as unsafe, each building that appears to him to be essentially dangerous to life because of a liability of fire, bad conditions of walls, overloaded floors, defective construction, decay, unsafe wiring, or heating system, inadequate means of egress, or other causes. And he shall affix a notice of the dangerous character of the building to a conspicuous place on his exterior wall.
Did he put, did he put that notice up?
He did not. And the reason he did not do that is because we were made aware of a restraining order, and what we said was, "We don't want to infringe upon that, so don't take any action."
Oh, my.
Don't take any action to put that on the building and let that be status quo. So what we did was, the building inspector did his job.
No, he didn't.
Well...
If he didn't put the notice on the building, he should have retracted the letter.
His letter was to the owner. And you have a copy of the letter in it.
Oh, yeah.
The letter was to the owner to say, "These are the deficiencies in the building. You need to fix those deficiencies in the building, or I have, or I've got to condemn that structure."
But the owner took the letter and sent it to the judge and admitted it as evidence in a lawsuit, and the county's just sitting here dumber than dirt.
The, the building inspector did his job that he's required by law to do. And what we said was, "You do what you would normally do. It's not our position for us to go in and make a judgment to say, 'Wait a minute. Who owns that, or who doesn't own that, or who has influence over this?'" Our folks have to do their job without that influence. They have to do what they would normally do. And we had a long discussion about that. What would you normally do in a situation? And the comment was, "We would normally go and inspect. We would send a letter to the owner telling the owner what the deficiencies were and instructing the owner they needed to correct those deficiencies before they could do anything with it."
But it's a grossly unreliable and unethical and untrue letter. When you say the floors are decayed and unsafe to walk on, you're implying that you've got about 35,000 or 40,000 square feet of floors that are in bad shape, and that is not true.
Any commissioner got a question or a comment?
I got a comment.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I took a tour down there about six months ago, walked through the whole hospital. And there was holes in the floors. There's part of the, in the kitchen area where the floor has actually collapsed. The ceiling tiles are out. There's rust in the, in the, in the roof area, wires exposed, and there is mold and mildew halfway up the walls. I saw it myself, and it was, the mildew and mold was so thick in that building. I didn't wear a mask. Ron Buzzio did. And when I come out, I had a knot in my throat.
Why were you guys down there? Y'all got a special trip, right?
I was asked by the LLC to go down and take a view of it. In fact, it's any of your business.
It is some of my business. You're a commissioner, and I'm a commissioner. It is my business.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, gentlemen.
That's right. They didn't want honest people down there. They wanted people they could manipulate.
Okay. Commissioner Buzzio.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to say one thing about what you said, Brian, is not too long ago, in California, a warehouse burned down. A number of people were killed in that warehouse. And there were, prior to that, there were a number of complaints made to the city or town, and they never inspected the place. And this was over a number of years. And so now the question is, and some of the material I've read, is that there's a lot of liability being thrown around, not only against the owner of the building, but against the town for the failure to inspect. So what I want, one thing I want to say, and then I've got a couple of things I'd like to say, Mr. Chairman. In my opinion, the county could have assumed liability if we didn't inspect at the request, whether it's an owner, a request of a land, somebody's renting a building or something, not to inspect that building. As far as I'm concerned, in reading the testimony, which makes interesting reading, and the judge's opinion, and this is a word-for-word of that hearing, I think we did a, we did a good job. If we didn't do what we did, we could have assumed liability. And also, we had to follow the TRO by not issuing a condemnation. We didn't issue a condemnation. We issued hazardous condition. Excuse me, and I like some professional...
That's not true. You're not going to get it from me because I'm going to defend the public.
That's the truth.
Commissioner Richardson, a line to finish.
It's the truth.
Please.
Let it, I'll read the last paragraph so everybody understands what it says. On the general statute 153A-365, the property owner shall merely remedy defects and hazardous conditions. If the defects and hazardous conditions are not remedied merely, then we'll have to condemn the building. But in condemning a building, you still have the opportunity to repair in reading the statute. But I want to say something about the hearing itself. The main issues in this hearing that the judge rendered a decision on, yes, he did mention this letter, but the TRO was based upon fiduciary obligations of the managers of the LLC. That was one issue. The other issue was, was the failure, he kept talking in the testimony about the lack of funding. For two and a half years, they tried to raise funding, and they couldn't raise it. So those are two main issues in here. But the main issue that he rendered his opinion on was the fiduciary obligation of the four managers. And you know what the judge said? That they were a model. They did everything they were supposed to do, and all LLCs should follow that model throughout the country. That's what the judge said. And if you doubt my word, I would suggest that you read the 70-something pages of this and see what the judge had to say on it. So, Mr. Chairman, as far as I'm concerned, the county did what they were supposed to do. These allegations of wrongdoing by the county are unprofessional, and there's no foundation for it.
I'd like to make a comment. I, we're going to let the commissioners, if anyone else wants to say anything.
Well, I just want to say, of course, to Brian and the attorney, I appreciate y'all not calling me since you called all the other six of us. I really do appreciate you not calling me. That is just as far from the truth as I have ever heard. Neither one of you have called and said one thing to me about Bell Haven Hospital. So I mean, as far as folks accusing you guys of calling us commissioners, oh, that's just as unethical as what we are alleged of. And so I really do appreciate y'all for not calling.
Commissioner Langley.
Yeah, and I simply want to say, you know, from the outset, my whole fault plan has been this. I said in the beginning, I was not going to vote alone Bell Haven any money for a hospital. And when I voted against it, I had absolutely nothing else to do with that hospital. They could keep that hospital open, fine and dandy. But beyond that, as far as all this other propaganda out here, I don't know anything about it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have one more thing I want to say. Mr. Buzzio has distorted the truth. The truth is when the judge was admonishing the LLC as being a model for everyone else to go by. He based it on a lie. The lie is that he stated just prior to this, that the LLC had the magnificent foresight to have a study done to see whether a hospital could survive in Bell Haven or not. The LLC never had the first study done about anything. The town spent $30,000 for the first study. The town had two subsequent studies done, and both, all of those studies said that a hospital was viable with good management in Bell Haven. The judge was in a hurry. If you read my article, which is in the Beaufort Observer, he already had his mind made up before he got there. And he distorted the record himself and then issued a judgment based upon his own lie.
Adam.
Okay.
One minute.
Okay. First off, the judge, the judge said things that were absolutely not true, and there will be articles coming out showing the truth next to what he said. He was a McCrory appointee, and he was absolutely fixed. There's no doubt about it. And if you know the truth and read that transcript, you can see it. And that man will probably never get elected for a judge again in his life once we get done with pointing out the lies that he told on the, in the, on the bench. He told lies on the bench. So anyway. I'd like to also say, Gary was right. Commissioner Brins was right. There was a kitchen area where the floors fell in. Did you hear that? The kitchen area is where the floors fell in. Not the whole hospital, the kitchen area. There were some ceiling tiles missing. That's right. That's where the leaks were. There were a few leaks. So they just, by his testimony, it tells you that this letter was wrong and what the condition of the building was. Mold, mildew, we got it everywhere. Everywhere in Beaufort County. Anywhere near the water, you got mold, mildew, and you can clean it up. This was not a normal situation, Mr. County Manager. This was a situation that affected about 15,000 people's emergency care and life-saving facilities. And you got right in the middle of it. You say you didn't want to affect the TRO? You got right in the middle of it on purpose.
You're finished. You're finished. We're going to take a break.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, Commissioner Langley would like to say a word?
Yeah. I just want to say to you, Mr. Manager, I don't have a problem with your integrity, and if I did, I would call for a closed session and we run you out of here. But I don't, I don't have any problems, any doubts that you are above board and you did what you thought was best. And I just wanted to say that openly and in front of everybody.
Okay. We're down to item number three, the proposed budget calendar and draft planning retreat agenda. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, you have before you a proposed budget calendar for the 17, 18 fiscal year. Also, we've attached a draft planning retreat agenda. A couple of changes in the proposed schedule for 17, 18 in the budget. One of the things, and if you'll go down under budget, I will tell you, we made a mistake on one of them. Commissioners, budget questions, clarification to the manager, we said, "Please submit before 5/8/17." It's actually 5/18. We missed a one there. One of the things that, it's specifically, exactly the way we did it last year in the layout, what we did do was ask that you give us a little additional time. The reason that occurred is, is that what we're trying to do is give the tax office some additional time to get revenue numbers in and solidify those revenue numbers. Business personal property, the final date for business personal property is April 15th. So with the, with the calendar this year, your May meeting is very, very early in the month. So we would be forced, we'd be rushing the tax department to get in information. And what we want them to do is to be able to get in as much information as they can on business personal property because the businesses will wait, will wait till the very last minute to get those numbers in. And then we don't, we, we have to cut it off at some time and make a best guess estimate on what those revenue numbers are going to be. So that's where you see where we've asked you to allow us to hold a special meeting on May 15th to present the budget to you. That gives, that gives the tax office a couple more weeks to get in those additional business personal property listings that come in at the very last minute. So that's essentially the change there. The other one little change that we did do was, we reduced the number of meetings in the budget workshop because, as you recall, last year, and again, we can expand those as we need to, but as you recall, last year, we ended up getting out of here real quick one night. So what we did was, we combined the county and the outside agency discussion of service expansions in the year. The second piece you have is the proposed planning retreat agenda. It is very similar, again, to what we did last year. We have not nailed down a location yet. We'd asked for your, for your indulgence in that. It was our impression, staff's impression, I don't know if it was your impression or not, that it was a bit cramped at the estuarium with everybody in there. not, that it was a bit cramped at the estuarium with everybody in there, and what we thought was, we would look for another venue that may be more conducive for comfort for the board, as well as to be able to have people there if they wanted to, because in that situation, you had people around the walls, and it was kind of cramped. We've talked to the community college about maybe using one of their larger rooms, so that you could have more people, and people could be comfortable in this, sit in here, and understand some things. Couple of the changes that we did in the proposed planning retreat agenda, again, we're going through our major departments, getting you the information, letting them give you an update on where they stand, what they anticipate coming up, both the community college and the school system, and then our major departments. We've also included a short piece in there from our new risk manager. She's doing some really good things, and we want you, want you to know about what those things are. The register of deeds, Ms. Whitehurst has asked for some time in the planning retreat to talk about some of her concerns with her space needs, so we, we put some space on that for there. Again, we added in some time, some additional time for Mr. Parker to talk about the revaluation project, because we're, we will be a year into that, and he'll have some additional information for you. There's also a piece in there this year that, that you did not have last year, and that's the election piece. We're gonna ask Ms. Hawkins to come in and give you an update on that, because there obviously is gonna be some implications with some of the new law changes, and potentially additional elections that may come up. I know there's some, there's some legal battles that are going on regarding that, but you need to understand clearly what implications there are for the budget regarding those. And then, there's also a piece in there for the public transportation update from the BATS group. They did a short presentation, and we've had some meetings with them about their concerns, about the ability to continue to provide those services, and so we want them to be able to lay that out a little, a little bit more for you. They are providing the transportation piece that the county is responsible for providing. And then also, there's some additional information from the human resources that we didn't do last year. As you're aware, the board approved a personnel policy update, and also a pay and classification study. And we should have those by then, and want you to be able to have some conversations about that, and let, let Ms. Kreisman give you an update on that. The last piece of that is, the board has mentioned that they would like to do some strategic planning. Obviously, you can't do that in, in 45 minutes that I've put it on there for, because that's a multi-day process that you need to go through, and you need to go through it with somebody besides staff. You need to, in, in, you need to bring somebody in who does that for a living, who can walk the board through that process, and it takes, I mean, if you look at what the community college has done, if you look at what the school system has done, it takes several days of concerted work and focus. So, what I would like to do is have someone come in and talk to you maybe a little bit about that process, whether it's someone from the school of government, or whether it's someone who does that as a contractor, to talk about that process, and for y'all to, to figure out, is that where you want to go? Obviously, we can't do it at this time, but then set aside some time later, you know, in, in the upcoming months, to sit down and talk about that, and really go through it, and do that process the way it should be. So, we'll certainly take any comments you have and adjust as needed, but this was the draft that we wanted to present to you.
Any, any additional comments?
One more question. So, are you saying then, for the planning session, that four o'clock session, you're gonna have somebody come in?
What I'd like to do is just have someone come, come in and talk about strategic planning, the process of strategic planning, what it takes to do it, how you go through that process. I think I can get someone from the school of government to come in and do that, and talk about that with you, and, and go through that process. Obviously, again, you can't do it in 45 minutes.
I understand that. It takes, it's a while.
It is. It takes some time, and it takes some effort, and it takes getting aside to be able to do that and focus on it. So, that's kind of what I want to walk you through. The other piece, the other piece that, in the finance piece, we want to talk about is, what are, and some folks forget, that there are certain mandated functions that this board is required to fund. And when you talk about a budget, and you look at what opportunities you have for reducing that budget, or making changes, you gotta understand clearly what statutorily you're required to provide. You know, there are certain things you have to do. You have no choice but to fund them. So, let's, what I want to do is take you through that process, so that everybody clearly understands what those statutory requirements are. Then, when you say, we want to cut this or this, then you know where you can and what you can't.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can we consider the attorney's theater a venue to hold the budget? I mean, they've got ramps to get up, and they got ramps, they got a big area, big seating area to come and go as you please. They, they're very receptive to that.
If, if the board is, and I don't know, you know, from, from our perspective, we're trying to minimize any costs, the, I don't know if they charge us for that, if the board wanted us to look out for that and see, and we can certainly bring it back to you. It's my understanding that there would be no cost at that.
We'll go get it one day and see if that'll work, and I've been, I've been looked at. I think it's just a lot more room up there than you think.
So, I mean, if, if the board would like for us to look at that, we can certainly look at it for cost-wise, because if they would charge us for that, we're happy to do that.
Any opposition to looking at that site? I bet you and Jerry check that out.
Okay.
All right, we're down to number four, use of the county funds for laboratory work. Brian?
Actually, I think whether Commissioner Richardson wanted to address it, or whether you want to.
No, you probably know more than I do.
Well, I, I had a conversation, again, this is kind of a follow-up with the district attorney, I had a conversation with Chief Rose as well. At the last meeting, we talked about the district attorney's comments that a drug, a certified drug officer with the sheriff's office, he felt would help expedite things more than, than anything. So, Chief Rose and I actually had that conversation today about exactly what that meant, and I reached out to the district attorney to ask him, was that someone who would actually be doing the actual testing of those drugs, excuse me, in a, in a controlled setting, just like they do in the lab? And he said, yes, it would not be, because the sheriff's office has folks who can do the initial quick test, to determine what they anticipate it being, and rule out things, and then give them probable cause to move forward. This, what the DA was saying was, this would actually be somewhat similar maybe to what they have in Pitt County, where the county actually has their own lab, and they have officers who do the testing. They're chemists. They're, they are certified officers, but they're chemists, and they do that work. So, I think that for us, and again, Chief Rose and I were having that conversation, whether we as a county have enough, have enough work to keep somebody busy. And, and if we do, then that's great. If we don't, then maybe, maybe it doesn't make sense for us to do it. And then we explored the opportunity of, well, what if we looked in this prosecut, prosecutorial district? Was there a way to bring everybody together and look at one? And again, Chief Rose's comment was, well, we probably, we're the big fish as we look at that, that district, and we would have the majority of that anyway, and ours is very, very large compared to anybody else. So, if we can't sustain it, we didn't, we weren't sure that other counties coming in with us would be able to. Third option is maybe to have a conversation with the folks over in Pitt County. Chief Rose indicated that, that several years ago, they were actually asking, and again, I don't want to put words in his mouth, he's here, that they were asking for other counties if they wanted, as they were building their unit up, I guess, they were looking for other counties to, to send business their way. And it's my understanding, he said, they're actually not looking for that now, so I don't know if they have enough business, but we still have the opportunity to maybe reach out to them and say, is that something we could partner with you on, and pay you a small amount, or whatever, you know, instead of having to have somebody come. It's obviously quicker to come from wherever than it is to come from Raleigh. But that's kind of where things stand right now, and make any direction to be made.
Well, Mr. Chairman? Yes.
Brian, does this, would this do away with us having to send, send drug samples and blood out of the county?
I, I think it would, again, I don't know. My anticipation would be no, because you couldn't have all the equipment that you needed to analyze the type of drug was. And of course, it wouldn't, we wouldn't, I don't imagine they would do blood, and now, they may, I don't know. I just don't know the ins and outs of all that yet. Still some additional discussion.
Yeah, I talked to Chief Rose today, and we decided identically the same thing that you just said, that we probably should reach out to Pitt County and see if there's an opportunity there. But going back to what we're trying to do, you know, we're not trying to take over and do our, all of our own drug testing ourselves and all that sort of thing. We're trying to find a way that when some of these cases get hung up, that we have a place that we can go to get some help, because it's, right now, I just did the study, it's, it's, you have this jail report that you get every month, and there are 16 people out of the 70 that are in jail right now, that have been there for more than six months. Now, there's probably six or seven of those are murderers. Some of the murderers have been there for two years without a trial. And we have a lot of people, the big balance of the rest of those people are people that have got drug paraphernalia, and they're sitting over there for six months, waiting on a fairly common charge trial. And we need to find a way, we'll save a lot of money, if we can find a way to move these people on into their trial, and either get them on the street, or get them in jail, whichever place that, that they belong. And that's really all we're trying to do, is to find a way to get some assistance on cases when the state is not getting back to us promptly. And I, I support, you know, reaching out to Pitt County to see if there's an opportunity there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Something I talked to the DA about a couple of years ago, that we maybe can look at next week when we go to Raleigh, is part of the problem we've got, and Mr. Francisco can probably comment on this too, is that we bring on new laws, but we don't take any off the books. So, you've got people sitting in jail, and we keep piling laws on, so if you bring on a new law, you should take off two laws. And that's what's happened to a lot of these, there's so many laws on the book now. And I think we're going to, and they're asking, what do you recommend? And I think that's something we need to talk to them about. What can we do about removing some of these old antiquated laws off the books that are, they're being hidden behind and taking up time? Just, just a thought.
A problem, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Like Mr. Richards just stated, it's six or seven of them sitting down there in jail because of drug paraphernalia charges. If you study and look at them pretty closely, they're probably a violation probation. You don't have to have a drug test for a paraphernalia charge, but if you do something on the street, if you get charged with drug paraphernalia, you back in, you got a probation, violation probation, you go back down, and there's no way to get you out of there for that. So, that's, that's one of the things you might see if you look deep enough.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right, because the summary numbers that we came up with, I think that the DA and sheriff came up with last month, were that we would probably have seven cases at any one time, six or seven cases at any one time. That's not very many cases, so we're just talking about a way that we can, can shorten on a few cases, because if a guy's been in there for six months, and you have six of them, and you can get rid of them, that's 36 months of jail time at $50 a day, you're talking about a, a lot of money. And you're also talking about being able to, maybe, this is a poor way to say it, but let's say, do better enforcement on what's already out there, because I'm sure there's a lot of cases that policemen don't bother to arrest, because it's, it's only going to crowd jail. So, it would do a lot for law enforcement if we could, if we could accelerate this. Plus, the prisoners, they, they, you don't deserve to have to sit in jail for six months to get a trial. I mean, that's, that's, there's a problem there.
Any other, any other comments? If not, we'll move into items for decision. The first one is a request for waiver of interest on tax payment. Mr. Floyd Brooks?
I appreciate y'all having the time to hear my case. I appreciate you taking the time. I've been paying my taxes in Beaufort County for a long time, and I got a lot of property I paid my taxes on. I asked y'all to take a look at this stuff here on this taxes. I'm talking a year 2014. I've been paying the current taxes on the property. I bought the property first of the year on, on 14, and when I went up there to pay the taxes on 15, I paid them in full. I asked them what I owed, I paid them. And when I went up there on 16, pay them, what happened? I wasn't getting the notice for the 14 taxes. And if I got the notice, I would have paid it. All I'm asking y'all to help me on the interest and the fees, I paid the taxes on the original taxes of 14. If I knew about it, I would have paid it. I didn't ever, it kept on sending the, the bill to the current person that used to own the house. I'm asking y'all to help me with the fees and the interest.
Am I correct? Is the amount of money $344.98?
Yes, sir.
And then $5 in, in the fees?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, the taxes has been, the, the original taxes, I went up there and paid them in full.
Right, right.
Like I always have every year, on all my properties. I've never been, you know, if I owe it, I'm gonna pay it. If I owed, if I knew I owed it, I would pay it, and I wouldn't have no interest or, or no fees.
What you're saying is, you bought the property during the year, and the tax notice got sent to the previous owner?
Yes, sir. And I didn't realize to 16. It went on, it went on up to year 16, this year. And I've already had, I had the properties, I've been paying the taxes, and didn't know about my, my past taxes on the property, because I didn't never get a notice. When we went there to pay the taxes, we weren't told.
It was showing up delinquent under the previous owner?
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that correct, Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Okay. Any?
He bought it in January of 14.
Of 14.
So, the property owner that, excuse me?
Go ahead.
So, the property owner that, the prop, the person that he purchased the property from should have paid the, the taxes before, because, the D.7 of the 31st, is that what you're saying?
The 14, January 1, 14, was a lady, and she, normally, she would have paid the bill, and I'm sure this was prorated, because it was on, he owned it, he owned 10 days of it for 15, 14. He bought it in 14, she only owned 10 days of it in 14. So, he should have become the tax owner as of 15, but in the D., it mentions that he would be responsible for the $2,000 in taxes. We did not, he did not get a bill, I'm sure it went through the lady. We don't have to send bills out. We came in, I think, the next year or two, when the new system moved over, we now send tax bills to both people. And so, I think Mr. Brooks realized he did own at these properties, but I missed a lot.
Yeah, I'm not complaining about not owning the property. I didn't ever get a bill, I didn't realize I owed the taxes to the 16 this year, and I would have paid it. If I got a bill, I would have paid it, and I wouldn't have no interest or no fees on, on none of the bill. That's from.
You got lost in the transition between the two systems.
Yes, sir. And I've already paid the taxes on the property up to this year. I'm not, I'm not denying that. I'm just denying, if I knew I owed the money, I would have paid it. And I wouldn't have no interest or no fees, because I would have paid it in full, like I've done in all of it.
Mr. Parker, I, I don't know what the law on this is, but can we as a governing body waive that type of interest?
As a tax assessor, I can't waive it, and as of the, as I, I think I spoke to Mr. Richardson, that he asked me about this. I think it's the law of all provinces that you do not have that right. But as I told him, if you do, and if you want to do that, I don't have anything to do with it, but I'm just giving you, if you remove it, and someone files a civil case, or if you remove taxes on this property, you can be liable to pay those taxes back if someone brings it up. That's.
Mr. Chairman?
That's mine.
Mr. Chairman? Let me ask you. Yes. Bobby, haven't we made adjustments in the past for clerical errors?
You have made them for clerical errors, and I don't really think there's nothing clerical about this one. We don't have to send tax bills out. Those tax bills are something that, if we had to send them out, it would be, everybody would say, I didn't get my tax bill, so we'd be year-round.
But you have this situation with every property that transfers in Beaufort County during, during the year, so, you know, I don't have anybody else complaining to me about this, so I'm sure those adjustments are made for clerical errors, possibly without anybody really knowing about it. So, I, you know, he got caught in the transition.
I was told they were switching computers. It might have been probably a reason why. And still, if I owed the bill, I would have paid it, like I've done in the past on all my property.
Did you, did you close, did an attorney close the real estate? Did you, did you close, did an attorney close the real estate transaction?
Yes, sir.
Was it not explained in the transaction that the taxes were prorated?
I'm not complaining about the taxes or owing, I paid the taxes.
You're just complaining because you never got a bill?
Right, never got, never got no, never, never knew I owed it for the interest I caused. I went down on 15 to pay the property taxes and I paid it in full. I asked the lady, can we pay our property taxes? Like I do every year. I go down there every year and pay them all in full.
Mr. Brooks, am I, maybe I'm misunderstanding it. Did you just not pay that 14 bill in the last week or so?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I found out I owed it, I paid it. You know? I'm not denying I didn't owe it. When I found out I owed it, I paid it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Ryan, can, can you add anything to this discussion?
A little bit. I had a conversation, I actually had a conversation with, with Mr. Parker and from what I understand from statutes, the Machinery Act, and I had a conversation this afternoon with Chris McLaughlin, who's with the school of government, who's their tax guy. And actually, I pulled up one of his old blogs that talks about this. And then I had a conversation with him this afternoon and he, he actually contradicted himself. So here's the example that he writes, and it says, "Sam moves to Virginia but still owns property in North Carolina. The tax office continues to mail Sam's bill to his old NC address. The bill's never reached Sam. When Sam finally learns of the outstanding tax bills three years later, he demands the taxes be waived because of a mailing error." Now, here's, here's Mr. McLaughlin's read on that. And he says that the error by the tax office delayed the bills from reaching Sam, but it didn't impose the underlying taxes nor render them invalid. General Statute 105394 states immaterial irregularities is the tax process does not invalidate an otherwise valid tax. So it is a valid tax. And under GS 105348, Sam is charged with notice of his taxes even though he never receives a bill. So the statutes say you are on notice that you have taxes owed. Now, again, I have said this to people. The Machinery Act is written very lopsided. It was written by the General Assembly to collect taxes and it is written very, very lopsided. And what it essentially says is, we don't have to send you a bill. You're on notice that you owe the taxes. And even if we do something wrong, it's called the immaterial irregularity statute, they can say, I'm sorry, you still knew you owed the taxes. So in, he continues to write, Sam has a slight, so it says, "Sam is charged with the notice even though he never received a bill." So he owes the taxes. His next comment is, "Sam has a slightly stronger argument for a release of the interest on those taxes, but I think that too is a loser." Now, when I talked to Chris about it this afternoon, he said, if the board feels, there is an oper, there is a mechanism, as Commissioner Richardson said, under the clerical error statute that allows you to waive something if there is a clerical error. Now, the, the issue with clerical error is you're kind of out there on your own because it says a clerical error, error is more difficult to define. It's clear that the error must be made by the government, not by the taxpayer, and the statute requires that the tax be imposed through clerical error and only the government can impose a tax. Beyond that, the issue gets murky. The only appellate case to examine clerical error is Ammons versus Wake County, and that was in 97. And it concluded that a clerical error must be one that produces an unintended result and is apparent on the face of the document, such as a transcription mistake. So if you transcribe something wrong. Now, again, Chris seemed to try to lend some weight this afternoon to say, if your board feels that they can pigeonhole that into a clerical error and they want to stand on that or are willing to stand on that, then I think you're okay. However, and he, he pointed me right back to what one of the commissioners has said, that, and here's the last comment in his article, "Tax officials and governing bodies who think these refund provisions are too restrictive should remember, it's more than just the county finances that should be in line if they're too generous with their tax refunds. GS 105380 makes the governing board members personally liable for refunds or releases that violate the Machinery Act." So if you do something that violates the Machinery Act, you are personally responsible for that.
That's right.
So, again, we kind of went in the circles. And, and his comment was in one piece, no, you probably can't, but this afternoon he tended to indicate if your board felt that you could put that in a clerical error situation and if you had done that previously and, and had some history on that, that maybe you could. But that's for this board to decide because you are the governing body who is charged with, with that.
Mr. Chairman? Yes.
Mr. Parker? How many errors like this have we had?
Well, I really don't consider this an error. We've done what we, we've done.
Well, it's got to be an error. He didn't, he did not get his tax bill. So there's got to be error there somewhere. I know that it got lost in transition, but still, he should, he should've been, somebody should've found his new address, is what I'm saying. I mean, he's got property all over Beaufort County. I've known him all his life.
Well, yeah, I see that. I think it says somewhere in the Machinery Act that you know you own property. We have a tax office that you could come down to the tax office and litigate the issue of this property. Yes, there is a bill on it. You have to, January the 5th, take care of this bill in 15, and it should've been taken care of. Now, that's...
Okay, when I went in there on the 15th, year 15, when I paid my 15 taxes, why won't, why didn't they tell me I owed the 14? Why wasn't the money pushed to the back?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and do that.
I'm asking you that. And then when I paid the 16, it happened to me.
It was under the previous owner's name. So if we pulled up Mr. Brooks's name and all his information and everything he provided us, we could only give him the information he presents us with. You know, I, I wouldn't know that there's a transaction done because it should go to Land Records, through their process come into our system and then come over to Mr. Parker's system. I, I would have no knowledge of that unless the taxpayer presented that to me. You know, if the taxpayer presents it, then I can go pull it up, hopefully find something to tie it to it, which means I have sent people over to pull a D. or get the information to see the transaction. But in this particular case, when we did provide him 15, we probably provided him for everything that Mr. Brooks owned. We had no idea that this piece of property was there until, and I, I actually sent a debt set off letter out to the previous owner. You know, we, in the general statutes, it does ask, well, we put it in the language of our notices, that the previous owner please forward it to the new owner. But we all know what happens with that. If a previous owner gets it, they may throw it away, they may get rid of it. But when my staff pulled it up and I've gone back and looked at it, we didn't have any record that he owned the property. So we did provide him with the information we could at the time of what he provide, what he had in his name.
When they notified me what I owed, I paid it. No questions asked.
That's not the question. I'm just trying to find out whether there's a way that we can do it and, and not get us in trouble. There's no way that that interest, he's not, he's not complaining about his property tax. He pays his property tax. He's just complaining about the, the interest that's on it. And, and he didn't know about that interest or I, I know that he would've paid it.
I've got a question.
Yes, Mr. Brooks.
Is there any way that we can put a lien, I mean, the person sold him a bad bill of goods evidently? I mean, if the person owed the taxes and he didn't get it, is there any way that, I, I would hate to taint his, his title.
That taxes are gonna follow right along with the...
The, the transfer.
And see, reflective of January 1st is whoever owned it for the previous year. So when I send my notices out, which we asked, I asked permission for y'all from, I'm going on the basis that the system is updated. Now, when we went from 14 to 15, I do remember we pulled out about 350 that had been transferred but were not reflective in the new system to hold it. I could only go off of what was provided and do my due diligence to make sure I didn't advertise anybody in error. I mean, that's me doing my due diligence to make sure. Did somebody maybe get advertised in the case? In this case, they probably did. But I could, you know, I could only do my due diligence to find what I can. I don't, I don't have to access it to the land records or the other systems. I can only go off of what we pulled out of the records for that year.
Well, Mr. Brooks, I've, I've been serving for two years.
Yes, sir.
This is the first time that it's ever come up during that two-year period. I don't know about the rest, but we're, we're really tied by state statute on some of this stuff. And when I hear somebody say that we're personally responsible for the $300, I mean...
Yeah.
Did I understand you say that?
It says if you release something in violation of the Machinery Act, you are personally liable if someone brings a claim against you.
But if it's a clerical error, you, you're not.
If, if the board views it as a clerical error and stands on that and believes it is a clerical error, you have the ability to release that, according to Mr. McLaughlin.
Well, I think we made a clerical error when we changed over computer systems and we didn't pick this up. I think that's where the clerical error was made. Then he should've been sent a notice right away, which he says he would've paid.
Mr. Chairman, did, but you said there's no obligation even to send a notice out collecting taxes. We are obligated, every citizen who owns property is obligated to know they have to pay tax. Is that what you said?
This is not taxes.
That's correct.
This is not taxes. This is it.
Interest because taxes weren't paid. Let me, let me clarify that. The Machinery Act, the Machinery Act puts every person on notice that they owe their taxes. And it, the Machinery Act does not require the county to send you a bill. It puts you on notice. It says if you own property, you owe those taxes. And I think in this instance, the taxes, when the property transferred, the taxes weren't paid. And, and was there a, you have to determine, this board is the only one who can determine that, as to whether you believe that that fell in line with a clerical error. And if it is a clerical error, then you have the ability to say, we'll waive that. You can't waive the tax because the tax is a valid tax. It's been paid. However, if, if, you also have to remember that when you say that, you may also open the door to everybody and their brother who says, I didn't get a bill.
Well, I don't think you're doing that in this particular case because at the time the property was transferred, technically there were no taxes because we had not set the rate for that tax year. Now, I know they use estimated taxes and a whole bunch of other things. The lien attached, but you didn't know what the lien was. You didn't know the amount of the lien.
Okay.
Because we had not set the taxes. Okay. So, so, yeah, you're right. The, the, right.
It's like taffy.
Well, the lien, the lien had attached and so, but the error was made by the county when the county did not pick up the title transfer when we switched computer systems. So that's where the error was made. Insofar as everybody else in the county doing this, look, as much real estate is transferred in this county, you're telling me this is the only guy that they haven't called over in the tax office somewhere and made the transfer without it ever having to come here? He's, it's pretty obvious, he slipped through the cracks. They didn't pick him up like they were supposed to and make, make the transfer. So we've made an error. And I move that we grant him the 360-something, $44 or whatever it is of tax relief unless we move on to something else. I second that.
It's not tax relief, it's interest.
Oh, yes, right. You've got to be very careful. Thank you. Thank you very much. It's not tax relief. He's right. I second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Are you guys included in the $5 in?
Yes.
In fees? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to waive the interest charges of $344.98 and the collection fees of $5. All those in favor?
Discussion?
Discussion.
Can I say something?
Yes.
This is very troubling for me personally and also based upon precedent. Based upon what you've said on state law about the obligation, if you own property, to pay taxes on it and it does not have to be any notification. Based upon the example you gave on what is a clerical error, to me, we'll, we'll be, this board will be stretching that interpretation that opened, that could open the door to giving us major problems as time goes on.
And, and again, I'll go back to the fact that the Machinery Act is written very, very one-sided.
Yes, I understand that.
Machinery Act says that you know you have taxes because you own property and we don't even have to tell you that. You know it and you have a responsibility to pay it. It also says that if we screw something up, there's a statute in there that says it's called the immateri, the immaterial irregularity statute. Sorry, we made a mistake, you still owe the taxes. That's the way the act is written. So it is very harsh and one-sided.
Correct.
However, this board, and again, it's, it's this board's decision. And, and there, according to this, there has been only one case that has, that has delved into litigation regarding what a clerical error is. It's this, it's your decision as a board to determine whether that meets the criteria of a clerical error. And again, a clerical error, it says, is difficult to define. It says it requires that, um, hang on, that it produces an unintended result and is apparent on the face of the document, such as a transcription mistake. So if the board believes that this occurrence fits that criteria, then I think you have grounds to stand on that. And you could stand up in court and say, this is what we believed if someone brought a challenge and, and, you know, let, let it, as long as you act in good faith, I think.
I think if it was, if he owed a tax, that I couldn't agree with it, but he owes the interest and the interest accumulated because he didn't know about it.
Interest accumulated because he didn't pay the tax. Is that correct?
Potato pot.
This is very troubling. It's very troubling. And the example you give, that the, the individual gave on what is a clerical error.
Right.
Like a transcription or something, makes this an extremely difficult situation.
It is.
I, I, I agree with this individual, but it just makes it extremely difficult. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And again, it goes back to this board's decision on what it defines as a clerical error because there's not really any good case law that talks about what that is. And you have to look at it in its totality and decide as a board whether you believe that to be a clerical error and whether you want to stand on it.
Correct, I understand. Thank you.
Any, any other commissary comment? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Two, all those opposed to the motion, raise your right hand.
This is an important vote, fellows. I've been here 20 years, I'm going to remember this because this is not the way it's worked in the past.
It is five to two. We've been, we've been informed that it was not a clerical error. That's the thing that concerns me. Our duty, you know, we've, we've already been informed that it's not a clerical error.
Okay. When I paid the 15, year 15, okay, they should've told me I owed taxes. Why didn't they take the 15 and switch it over to the 14? Pushed it back? You know?
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you. We're gonna go to the next.
I got, so, uh...
Yes.
Mr. Richardson stated that this was a, a critical vote. And, and if you look at the minutes a few years ago, this happened again. And it was, and, and it's in the minutes, I hope it's in the minutes, that Mr. Richardson stated that we don't even have to send you a bill. And that person doesn't pay.
That's right.
Now, that was a few years ago that he stated that. That's what I made that decision on.
That's right. We don't have to send you a bill. But if we make an error, we need to stand good for it.
Okay, we're down to item number two, approval of technical services agreement. Christina Smith.
If you would allow me to, I'd like to speak about item number two as well as item number three. Both of these items deal with providing emergency power to the sites for the Beaufort County Water Department. If you recall, in the fiscal year 2017 budget, there are funds that were allotted to start providing emergency power to our sites. A little bit of history is that we do not have generator power at any of our water sites. We do not have it at any of our plants or any of our pump stations. Obviously, we live in the coastal plains, we have flats, so elevation is not our friend when it comes to moving water around the county. So the only way that we can move water from place to place is with pumps and pumps need electricity. So during major storm events, whether that be hurricanes, whether that may be ice storms, if electricity and power goes out, then we are limited to the amount of water that is currently in the elevated storage tanks. Through the years, there have been some situations, there have been some areas of the counties that have run dry. And so that is why the board as a whole, as well as the Water Department, has investigated the best means to go about providing emergency power to these sites. This board made a decision fiscal year 2017 to start allocating money to do that. We are currently in the first year of a three-year plan to do that. And so, what, the first item is item number two, which is approval of technical services agreement. McDavid and Associates is an engineering firm out of Farmville. McDavid and Associates has been with the county for many years during the development of this system. McDavid and Associates quite honestly knows more about the system than any other engineering firm around, and more than their designers, more than I know, more than Eric Jennings knows, which is our Water Systems Manager, so they have a lot of knowledge. Tied to this, which is the money that we had allotted in this current fiscal year, is also, if we all recall, Hurricane Matthew. Hurricane Matthew came and hit, came up the coast, and we suffered damage in October. And we did have an extended power outage. Very grateful to the hard work of the, the power companies. That outage was not as long as it was originally anticipated. If you recall, they were initially giving us information at the Emergency Operations Center that Beaufort County could be without power for up to seven days, five to seven days. I can tell you, power outage that long, there would have been citizens in this county without water. We worked diligently at the EOC, dealing with FEMA, dealing with the State Office of Emergency Management, to get generators moved in, because we knew it was an issue. So, as soon as the storm was coming, we immediately started working on that, placing the requests through the state EOC system and putting those in. The requests were approved. However, dealing with that type of getting the equipment of the size that we needed in that amount of time is not an easy process. There were many, many hoops to jump through, and I believe we counted there would be a total of four inspections before the generators could actually be turned and activated. It's not as easy as it is at your house, where you just take and go and plug it in a, you know, go into your fuse or your breaker box and do a little, little wiring, and suddenly everything works. When you're dealing with US government generators, you're dealing with trucking companies, you're dealing with inspectors, you're dealing, we had to have an initial person come out to analyze what we needed, then we had to have the trucking company show up, which, by the way, the trucks got lost on the way. Then, when they came, they had to make the deliveries. The apparatuses that are required, the pigtails and that type of thing were the wrong size. So, there is a lot of things that went into it. However, thankfully, we never had to use those, because the power companies worked so hard and they were able to restore normal power. But I will tell you that we, the, we, the citizens of Beaufort County were blessed. I believe the good Lord was looking out for us. So, I didn't get a lot of sleep, county manager didn't get a lot of sleep, a lot of nervous, nervous times, a lot of nail biting, so we're trying to prevent that. FEMA has issued, there are funds that are available. And if you'll see, item number three, Hurricane Matthew priorities, we all see in the news where there are funds that are available, and we want to make sure that Beaufort County is included in the pot when they start handing out those funds. They've established priorities. The first priority is residential mitigation. Obviously, that doesn't affect us. But the second tier, after the residential, after people's homes and their primary residences, the next item that the North Carolina Department of Public Safety and Emergency Management has listed are generators. And currently, what they are anticipating is we would only, that the municipalities or local governments, it would only be a five percent match, that they would be funding ninety-five percent. So, obviously, I want to put Beaufort County in the best possible scenario to be able to receive these funds. And I believe McDavid and Associates gives us that best opportunity. Again, going back to what I said earlier, they know the most about the system, they can analyze the system, they know what we need, and they can do it in a very quick manner, so that we will be able to meet the application deadlines that FEMA has, has in place. And the reason that I've combined the two is because, again, it's an overall generator project. I believe it's in the county's best interest to use one engineering firm to do both the initial installation, to do both the initial project, which was approved in the fiscal year budget, and then also to do the grant applications for the remainder of the sites. David and Associates is very familiar with the Department of Public Safety and Emergency Management, they do these type of applications frequently. Mr. Rich Moore is here, and he's the one who actually specializes in grant applications, because that is a specialty-type thing. And so, I'm asking you, one, to approve the technical services agreement, to do the first phase, which was approved as part of the fiscal year 2017 budget, so that no additional funds would be required.
You've heard the recommendation.
So, moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Brennan, is there a second?
No, second.
Got a second by Commissioner Langley. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand.
It's all yes down here.
All right, all those opposed. The vote is six to one. All right, now we're down to, on page two ninety-four, the second recommendation. This is submitting the grant application. On page two ninety-four is the second recommendation. And that's to authorize McDavid and Associates to proceed with the grant and submitting the grant application to the NC Department of Public Safety and Emergency Management decision.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a?
Chairman?
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
McDavis and Associates, they're going to write this grant free of charge, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Brennan, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Evans. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Yes, okay. All those opposed? Vote six to one. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're down to item number four for decision, hazardous mitigation grant program, Hurricane Matthew. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you all, sir. Ms. Smith did a very good job of presenting the five percent for the generators. But I'm here to talk about residential structures. And if there's any money left, which I don't think there will be, we do have three businesses that would qualify, but they're the last priority down there for mitigation, as it's presented by FEMA, and you've got the documents there in front of you all, and I submitted those earlier. What we have right now is that Beaufort County Emergency Management, together with the City of Washington, has submitted Heritage Drive. Those are the apartments, our apartment complex is down there, if you're driving up towards the airport, or towards the armory, just below the airport, on the left, that have flooded, in some cases, nine times in ten years. And FEMA's very interested in getting them out of there. We have everything ready. By the end of the month, we will have submitted for expedited mitigation, if you all give us permission to proceed, to the tune of roughly two point one million dollars to remove twenty units out of there. The deed to the land will go to the city, who will then be able to put a stormwater retention facility in, utilizing some of the property there that's down from the airport, plus where these units come out of, to help reduce the stormwater flooding below that facility and to the adjoining streets. Because what was occurring was it was hitting those buildings and bouncing over into the streets behind them, and was getting structures wet underneath their foundations. There were seven claims by people over there that were honored and paid by FEMA, because they had to get somebody to go in, get the insulation and the HVACs fixed on those adjoining streets. So, what I'm here to ask you for, since all the paperwork had been done once before, FEMA had approved the project once before from Mr. Ball, and he turned FEMA down on their offer, and then went bankrupt a few years later. The people that have it right now are very interested and very desirous to not continue to have to keep trying to remodel these facilities. They just didn't believe they were going to flood this badly, but they flooded, six of the units flooded three times in six weeks. So, with your all's permission, I'd like to submit that you authorize the designated agents for Hurricane Matthew to submit an HMGP project for the amount of two million one hundred thousand dollars for the acquisition of the twenty units, not elevation, but the acquisition of those twenty units. Get them out of there, and we don't have to have the threat of first responders trying to go in and waste deep water and trying to bring people out. Second item, we have identified fifty structures to sixty structures that will qualify under this HMGP program that are on the severe repetitive loss list and the repetitive loss list, that we have not been able to get elevated in the past, because they didn't meet the thresholds, FEMA kept changing on us. Hazard mitigation, they can't change that threshold on. That's the, the good news. So, some structures that have been flooded ten times, but only had five thousand dollars lost each time, the two thousand of that was deductible, so the people had to pay that out of their pocket. But the ten times they've had to clean out from under the house, or other parts of their property, and they'll keep doing it until they would reach a hundred thousand dollars worth of provable losses. We have an opportunity to get those people taken care of through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Then we have people who don't have to have flood insurance, or may have had it, but through no fault of their own, or because somebody else bought the property and they paid cash, didn't take out flood insurance. But if they've had previous losses, and we can demonstrate previous losses to we, the taxpayers and the federal government, because we all pay these taxes, we can eliminate these structures as part of this project. And so, we've been concentrating on the structures that in eighteen months are going to come out of the flood plain. And we're trying to reach in and grab some of those for the areas outside of the City of Washington, because once they go out of the flood plain, there'll be no chance ever getting those houses elevated utilizing a FEMA program, because there'll be no benefit cost associated with it, because they're not in the flood plain anymore. So, this is the last opportunity for some of these people utilizing past losses, who, several of them are senior citizens, who can, couldn't afford three thousand or two thousand dollars a year for flood insurance, made their choices, but they've been excluded. So, with the ten million dollars, the ten million dollar grant, I would propose that it would be two five million dollar grant request of twenty-five to thirty structures per project, because if you get above that, they become unwieldy and unmanageable, to total that ten million dollars. So, I would be asking for that. And then a new program. We identified some structures earlier that cannot be elevated, excuse me, that involve senior citizens, low in, or low-income people, because the structures are engineeringly not sound. To try to raise them, the homeowners would have to come up with a hundred thousand dollars for us to do a hundred and fifty thousand dollar lift of the house, but they'd have to do this hundred thousand dollars worth of repairs before we could lift the house. These houses don't make any, doesn't make any sense to try to fix them or elevate them. A new program that FEMA introduced two years ago, and not new to the residents of the state of North Carolina, because it was done under a different program before, would involve the demolition of the old structure, and in its place, a new structure would be built, cannot exceed twelve hundred square feet, but a new structure would be built for them. And this program would put five structures back in that are tax-paying structures. I mean, they're, they're going to be better for, for taxes, they're going to be better for the people, healthier for the people, and they'll all be elevated. But they are definitively senior citizens that we would have used what was called CDBG funds, that no longer exist at the present time, to utilize. However, I will be upfront. I talked to two of the other counties that have used this program over in the western part of the state. Not all the expenses that they incurred at the county level were covered for a one million dollar project. I'm recommending, this is an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar project in Beaufort County. But I'm asking that you approve ten thousand dollars of general revenue fund at a point, and only if FEMA approves us for the project, for the reconstruction, demolition and reconstruction of five structures, one in the City of Washington, one in the City of Bellhaven, the other three in the unincorporated areas of Beaufort County. Ten thousand dollars be allocated to account for any fees that may, we may not be able to get reimbursed for. And I say that, because this program is coming under HMGP, so I know once we sign a contract with them, there'll be no changes to the program, which FEMA sometimes likes to do. The initial survey of all those property, of each of those properties, has to be paid for before we can submit the property for contract, not before we submit it for review, but before we can go into contract with them. So, there's those expenses, title searches, some other expenses with each structure. So, I asked the other counties what, how much they went in the hole. One went fifteen hundred dollars, another went two thousand. And they ever, and that person says, okay, I'm going to hit that two thousand dollar. But I'm upfront about it, saying that's up there, that we may not, we may have to fund that, where may not be a provision to get that back. But ten thousand dollars to build five houses for five worthy families that are going to be paying taxes, and those houses are going to be around for a long time. We're going to get the money back very, very quickly on the taxes for those structures that we are not getting now, because each of the houses, the highest valued house is thirty-seven thousand dollars, as it's currently assessed by the county assessor. So, that's a number of, of recommendations that I would ask, that you authorize us to do the two point one million dollar project in the City of Washington at Heritage Drive, and the ten million dollar project for the structures in the, other than the City of Washington's unincorporated, or Bellhaven, or Bath. This one will have structures everywhere. I mean, there's a structure here, a structure there, all over the county. And then that you authorize us to apply for the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar demolition, tear now, putting back together five structures. Put it in layman's terms. Actually, the, the proper terminology is the demolition and rebuilding of structures. They can be done modularly, but they cannot be done as double whites. And I, and I just wanted to get that out. But that's, that's what we're asking for permission to do, and also, if we get the, the project for the reconstruction, that at that time and point when we get it, that you all indicate to me that we're going to have the ten, that my predecessor will have the ten thousand dollars to make sure that he's not having to find it in his budget to pay for the, the different things that may initially not be reimbursable.
Chairman?
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion that we give, give you the authority to pursue this money, but if you give a second, I've got some questions I want to ask also. So, that's my motion to approve this, his request.
So, you're, you're going with the full recommendation?
Yes.
Can we, can we take all this in one motion, or?
If you'd like to.
Okay, all right, we got a motion on, motion on the floor, is there a second? Got a second by Commissioner Langley. Now, for questions and discussion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Pat, you stated that the project over on Heritage Drive, and I'd be the first to tell you, it needed, something needed to be done over there. But if you can find another way, or find somebody else that's looking to buy a house for a hundred thousand dollars, I've got one for sale. I'm just trying to get my arms around two point one million dollars for that project. And my question is, who sets those prices?
Sir, when we're submitting this in, we need, we need to be able to identify what we, what we know it's assessed for, what we think since it's a rental property, that it's going to go above for that assessment. So, we used a one point five multiplier for the assessed value when we were doing the dollars for this. We may be, well, I hope we're over.
I think so.
However, I learned a long time ago, there's no going back to the well a second time with FEMA, especially with hazard mitigation grant funds. And so, FEMA's already seen these numbers, they said our numbers are fine, the only thing they made me add back was mold inspections for the first time. So, I had to add back in two hundred and fifty dollars per structure for a mold inspection, and then a mold abatement later.
Well, if I was done, I'd have wrote you a check.
For the moldings.
I'd have wrote you a check.
I wanted to go through it the first time we put it in. That's the goal.
That's all, but, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Dan.
I'm finished.
Oh, I'm sorry, did?
I'm finished.
John, let me ask you a question. So this project, about $13 million?
A little more than that, yes, sir. Right at that.
Give a take when you talk.
Yes, sir.
There was a lot of flooding during Hurricane Matthew. Does this take care of most of the properties, like in the city of Washington and the rest of the county?
Sir, the city of Washington will be submitting their own grants. The city of Washington, I was in discussions and meetings yesterday afternoon with the city floodplain manager, and we were working on some specific areas, like the actual floodways, to get the structures out of the floodways, to strategically go in and target areas like 15th Street where the houses and the kids drive through and push the water right in the front door of the houses, target the ones on 12th Street, in some cases, purchase properties in order to build a stormwater containment, or to provide a better flow of the water, so it frees up the other structures from not having flooding on the street. Their projects will probably come in, I'm going to estimate theirs will be $20 million. And that will take care of, by no means, all the problems in the city of Washington. But it's going to hit some of the historical ones that have been a problem, that the houses didn't qualify for any other programs but these. And once again, they're going to benefit because they don't have to have flood insurance when that house is selected for the program, nor do they have to have it prior to. But it's part of a full project, just like to one unit down at Heritage, of those 20, doesn't have flood insurance. Well, are we going to leave a half of a building standing? No, sir. And FEMA has agreed. Let's go ahead and get that one out of there, too.
I have another question. In here, it talks about the city of Washington, Bellhaven, and county estimated project totals of $875. So how many will these residents be in the city of Washington, Bellhaven, and county? What's the breakdown on those?
Okay, the $10 million.
I'm talking about estimated cost of $875.
No.
Am I reading that right? We would also seek authorization, conduct five home.
Well, of the reconstruction, I said earlier that there'll be one, there's one house in the city of Washington that we've been working with through other programs for four or five years. We've got one house in Bellhaven that we've been working on for three years, and finally the lady came out. And then there'll be three in unincorporated areas of the county. And we've got five targeted for those three. I don't think two of the people, they don't want a different place, they want the same place they got there, so they're going to get to keep the same place, I have a feeling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm being blunt, but that's.
Any other comments, questions?
The manager, what is he saying? Yeah. Chairman, just real quick, and I think John would want the board to understand that we simply don't have the capacity to handle all the projects, like for the city of Washington. They are managing, they're going to manage their own projects within the city. We don't have the capacity to do that ourselves. They have the staff, and they have resources to do that, and it's in their jurisdiction, which they've got to make some decisions. The city council, just like you're making decisions, the city council has to make those decisions about what they want to do, because it's in their jurisdiction. John's been working with them on the Heritage Part piece, because that was an immediate piece that they had been working with FEMA on. Typically, we wouldn't have been involved in that one either.
Yes, sir.
So.
We've done all the background work.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. I think it's seven zero.
Sir, I have one other item that's come up lately.
Stop playing that.
No, no, it's a, it's another form of mitigation, but it's kind of unusual.
This is information?
I had, yes, sir. I had a homeowner come in yesterday, and her surveyor called me and said that they want, she's going to write you a letter requesting that you do an ordinance to increase to the flood of record, the requirements for her to elevate structures on her properties. Because right now, eight of the structures she has on her property are already elevated above the base flood elevation, and they have flooded five times. And so the only, the only way she can qualify for ICC money, which is part of her flood insurance program, is if she has to raise them up to a level that they're not going to experience flooding again for a 100-year event. And it is out on VOA Road, it is Mrs. Caro, and she has flood insurance on the structures. They're not going to let her elevate them, because quite a few of the 12 she has flood insurance for 11 are already above the BFE, but they're not above the flood of record that was established, amazingly enough, in 2011. It was higher there, it was 14 feet, 7 inches.
You need upstairs.
And the base flood elevation is 11 foot, 3 inches. She was going to be sending a letter to you all through the floodplain administrator for the county, Brandon Hayes, for Brandon to process and get over to you all with the correct, and codes and this type thing. It's not unprecedented, it's happened in other counties, but this is the homeowner coming to you, asking for some help. Yes, she's going to benefit from getting that ICC money, but we're going to benefit, because this structure's going to be up out of the floodplain for a normal 100-year event. And it's, I'm still waiting for a call back as to how much establishing that flood of record survey will cost, and who is authorized to do it. That's a code issue with FEMA. I've got to see exactly how that's going to wash out, but when it comes back to you, Brandon or I, one will explain it all, but I didn't want it to be a shock to you all before the next meeting. It is unusual for a resident to come and ask this, but she has a reason. She doesn't want to deal with this anymore either. She's getting old enough, she said, I don't want to do this anymore. Mr. Mayo, the surveyor, called me, and he said, do you have any idea what should be out there? And I said, well, I know what 2011 was, it was 14 feet, 7 inches in her house. And he said, you got it right. He goes, that's what I think it probably should be, too. But I'm thinking they'll probably have us bring somebody in from outside to do the establishment of flood of record, do the USGS or one of those. But we need it done as quick as we can, so she can take advantage of getting those structures up before the next hurricane season comes along, and my predecessor has to deal with it.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all very much for the evening.
All right, we're down to item number five, Skills Center Memorandum of Understanding between Beaufort County and the Committee of 100, Mr. Marty Johnson.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. The Committee of 100 has asked for a small change in the MOU between themselves and you in terms of placing a phrase called "in its judgment the committee will." This is basically talking about contributions it will make to maintenance, repair, replacement of various things within the Skills Center. They just thought at their, they just wanted to ensure that we don't go and make repairs and replacements without them first approving it. So this, you had already approved this MOU on July 11, 2016. It then went to their board, who requested this change. It has gone through the Economic Development Advisory Board, and they've reviewed it, and recommend that you approve this change. And so I'd request that, that you ask, as chairman, Frankie Waters, to be able to sign the MOU between Beaufort County Committee 100 and Beaufort County.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Brennan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Busio, any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're down to item number seven, the EMS Contract for Washington Township, Commissioner Richardson.
All right, the same thing that's been on the agenda, that I've had on the agenda before, and what it concerns is that we leave the EMS contract as it is with the, for Washington Township, and that we, if you want to tweak it, or change it, or increase the contract, whatever, but we don't need to put a unit at Old Ford and deny, make service worse. And in doing what the county has proposed, we really increased the expense for everybody in the county by $650,000. This doesn't make sense. What we've got is working, we don't need to change it. This will be a budget item, is I guess when it's finally decided, because this board is reluctant to, reluctant to do anything about this. But if you don't understand how what we're doing increases everybody's expenses by $650,000, please call me, and I will explain it to you. We don't need to be going through this exercise. But I will make the motion that we not change the contract, just to see what happens on the board.
You got a motion, is there a second? If not, the motion fails. What I would suggest, you know, I keep hearing that there's another option that the city's coming to the county with. I would recommend that our county manager set up a meeting with the city, and we already have a committee established on both sides, and that we meet one more time to see if there is another option, to address the concerns of some of the citizens, and then come back with a recommendation to the board. Mr. President? Yes.
Yeah, I attended the last meeting the steering committee had on the township, Washington Township. Now that I'm a, you appointed me as a member of that, I agree, I think we need to have one more meeting, sit down, and just look at our options, it was, just having one meeting. I think on the second meeting, we can get a few things ironed out and move forward.
I had a conversation this afternoon with the vice chairman about that. He chairs that committee, and our goal is to have that meeting sometime next week.
Okay. And you'll report back at the February meeting? Okay. A board direction to the manager for the 2017-2018 budget, Commissioner Richardson.
All right, I'll read my, the motion, you guys have it, it'll take me about 30 seconds or so to read it. Motion to provide zero-based budgeting methods on a minimum of $15 million of the 2017-18 Beaufort County budget, whereas continuation budgets with expansion item increases ultimately result in distorted goals and wasted spending, and whereas the last attempted zero-based budgeting on any part of the Beaufort County budget was done more than 10 years ago, and whereas zero-based budgeting consists of a process of defining services to be provided, and then using budgeting tools to determine the cost to provide those services, beginning with zero funds appropriated, and whereas one indicator of inefficient spending is that taxes were increasing during this fiscal year. That tells you that we're, we have inefficient spending. Therefore, be it resolved that the 2017-18 Beaufort County budget will be accomplished by using zero-based budgeting techniques on a minimum of $15 million of proposed expenditures. The county manager may select the departments to undergo zero-based budgeting after commissioners define the services to be provided. This part of the budget is to be presented within the manager's proposed budget by individual line item without the aggregation of proposed cost. Now, let me say this, what we're doing is these continuation budgets, and they, all they do is increase costs. That's why taxes keep going up. As long as we're doing continuation budget, taxes are going to keep going up. When you do a continuation budget, you don't have the, the commissioners don't have the privilege of going through the entire item to see what's in there that's necessary and not necessary, and to challenge those items. We have a lot of expenses in a lot of places that are simply not necessary. A lot of it is overstaffing. So we need to get back to being able to challenge these things. Now, I'm not necessarily hung up on what I've defined as zero-based budgeting here. There's a couple of other budgeting techniques that can be used. You can use a baseline budgeting, where you simply go back and take the amount of money on any given year, like five years ago, whatever they spent in that department, and let the department justify any increased spending since then that they need. That's a justification. You're going through a justification process. There are other methods that Leary alluded to here, and if the board wanted to do something different than that, I would certainly support it. But we are running backwards when we do continuation budgets. They are easy to do. You just add a few bucks, and everybody's happy. You give people what they want, and the commissioners really don't do that. Commissioners sit here and rubber stamp these things, and everybody thinks we've done a budget. And we haven't come anywhere close to doing the work that we need to do to represent the taxpayers of Beaufort County. So if there's some, that's a motion, but I'm willing to hear an alternative to that motion.
My, my comment is that last year, for the first time, I felt like that we started out with a budget with the department heads heavily involved, working with the management team. And then, once we got into the workshop, they came in, and we had a chance to ask questions, and we were provided line item, where if we disagreed with something, you know, we could challenge, and we could ask questions on it. That's the first, that's the first budget. I can't speak to the other ones, but the rumor is, is that department heads were really not involved in the budget process up until Wendley came in on an interim basis. I still think that the commissioners have a chance during the budget workshop, over a five-day period, to challenge and to try to make changes in the budget. But I still think that it's a responsibility of the department head to come in and have the dialogue with the chief financial officer and the manager. So I like the process that we had last year. Any other comment? Is there a second? No second? Okay. All right, we're down to your next item, request for proposed language for recall election. Commissioner Richardson.
Well, that's the same motion that I've had before, that I'll make again. We're going into the long session of the legislature, and this is very timely for the commissioners to request that our legislative delegation see what else is being done on recall elections across the state of North Carolina, and give us some proposed language for recall elections for county commissioners. That's a motion.
That's a motion, okay. Is there a second to the motion?
Could I, could I ask the Commissioner Richardson something?
Yes.
Or we have to wait for a second?
Is there a second? Go ahead.
Okay. Would you consider amending your motion?
Well, yeah, I might have to hear the amendment.
Would you consider amending your motion to include that we ask the state to increase the number of commissioners to nine and go to district voting?
If you can get it by, I would consider that if it will pass the
Eds.
Various legal bodies that are involved in this, like the federal courts, and et cetera, et cetera, I'm willing to consider about anything. I don't like districts. I think if you would consider putting something in there that said that whoever the chairman of the board of county commissioners would run for the chairman separately, countywide.
No, I don't think I could.
Why not?
If we go districts, we go districts. Districts by, under the school board districts, we align ourselves with that, have been approved by main justice.
Well, that's, that's true, but, but selecting the chairman by a vote of all of the people of Beaufort County is really a pretty good idea.
So you want to get into some kind of a mayoral?
No, the chairman would just run as the chairman. Then somebody could run against him for chairmanship.
And then have nine districts. Then you'd end up with 10 board members.
Well, you could go back to seven where we are now. I mean, there's all kinds of ways to look at this.
Maybe we should discuss this in the planning meeting.
Yes, yes. Well, we don't have a second. Anybody else got any comments?
No, I'm just listening to your old dangling.
Okay. Well, I guess we, there was nothing mentioned by term last night, I thought that was part of it. All right, we're down to item number 10, adopt a resolution authorizing the deputy finance director to sign pre-audit certificates. That's you, Anita?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Of course, there are times when I'm out of the office, away at conferences and such, and I would like for you to approve this resolution authorizing the person holding the deputy finance director position to sign a pre-audit certificate in my absence, and this is allowed by General Statute 159-28.
And this is the way it was previously.
It was a last-minute ditch effort.
Let's see, who is the deputy?
Ms. Rose.
Oh, okay. All right.
I'll sort of move.
We got a motion by Commissioner Busio, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brennan, I think was first.
Go ahead.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. I think it's seven zero. Okay, we're down to item number 11, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners of the Federal Legislature for Golds, Brian.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The association is soliciting proposals from all counties regarding federal issues that anticipate impacting counties. You'll see in the, in the write-up here, the board of directors for the NCAACC will be reviewing those proposals at the February 15 meeting, and will set that federal agenda. You have any ideas that you would like to submit? You have any ideas that you would like to submit? The slate of goals has to be done before January 20th, or proposals need to be accepted by the association before January 20th. So if you have any of those ideas or any of those goals that you'd like to submit for federal consideration, go through the process. If you can, if you know those now, we'll take them, or if you would let us know by, so that we could get them in to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners by the 20th.
Does anybody have an issue that you want to go ahead and address? Put on the.
I think Mr. Trump's going to settle most of mine.
Okay, well, we, we, we have a chance to send you an email?
By the 20th.
By the 20th?
Well, a little bit before the 20th, so we can get in. We have to have it in by the 20th, which means.
Of January.
Yes, sir. So if you can get it to us by the 18th, that'd give us a couple of days to make sure we can get it. And, and just as a note, it, I think each of you got an email from the association about the goals that were set locally, state goals. And as I recall, three of the goals that this board touched on are in those. So it worked out really well.
Thank you. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
You got it.
All those in favor, raise your right hand.
We're out of here.